Obviously, you know, just from the work session standpoint, all members of the council are present or either on the other session where the conference call is. So we're just going to start Article 28, 2020, work session. Everyone's had a chance to kind of look at it, go over some quick items that are also on the agenda for the city council meeting tonight. We've got regular section minutes with anybody having any questions with either the April 14 regular minutes for the work session minutes? Any corrections, comments?
No comment.
Ms. Knight?
No comments, Mr. Knight.
Ms. Dean?
No comment.
Ms. Maun?
No comment.
Okay, so we should be okay there. On the actual meeting agenda, as far as I know, is there anything that needs to be adjusted?
Yeah, if you remember, Mayor, the G dot form for the non-discrimination agreement, where we were asking for the council to add that to agenda for vote. You just need to renew it and it takes your signature.
So item 10.
Yes, sir.
Is there any objection to that? Basically, G dot requires it sort of, we're authorized to assume that non-discrimination, not a lot of movement, so any objections to any of that? Ms. Tran?
No, that's I'm.
It'll be item number 10 on the whole agenda, and what we're doing is basically is part of a, you know, what we're going to call it, a G dot process with.
Yeah, it's just basically recognizing your requirement to non-discriminate in a federally-funded project with vendors.
Okay, everybody good for that? Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Tran?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be item number 10. So under the meeting agenda, that pretty much will get you there, and then from there, the regular agenda is pretty normal, but we'll start to cut back from some of the things we had discussions about.
Yes, and Mayor, so just when you call for that motion, make sure it includes you executing the document.
Okay, the first line, the last time we had a discussion or review was in relation to some of the online payments, and part of that was related to whether that was a long-term contract, and there was some questions. Has that been corrected?
Yes, sir, and I know that Councilwoman Dean had, I'm sorry, Knight, had specifically asked for Angela to review it, so she reviewed it if you wanted to make any comments, but it is a month-to-month commitment, not a long-term commitment.
And that's number, that's item five on the regular agenda. Any questions for anyone on that? And that basically was a $125 a month fee to basically allow everyone to file that. So hopefully we're just an update. Any issues with that? Ms. Knight?
No.
Ms. Dean?
Isn't that the contract that had a three-year?
Yes, but that's been changed. That's been changed. It's a month-to-month contract. Yes, ma'am?
Month-to-month, okay.
Yeah, now it's a month-to-month, so it's been modified, if you will. So you're good with that?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good, thank you.
And that's item number five, and that'll be all for them. All right, the next one is George Power Proposals, and last time we revised some authorizations for some of the high-mass lighting at the interchange, there was two poles that were damaged in an accident from many years ago, and we now have a price to basically repair those. That's item six on the agenda. One is in the amount of $62,000, and the other is in the amount of $9,414, for a total of $71,846. And then directly following item number seven is the people that are involved in that accident have State Farm insurance, and their maximum payout for property damage is $25,000, just for an FYI purpose. Are there any issues with that potential item? And this would also be funded out of both of those tax funds.
Well, the product development piece.
Product development, so. And any questions, Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
Did we hear back from the insurance company on whether there was going to be any other insurance contributions?
Just item seven, which would say that their maximum contribution is $25,000.
Okay.
And that's the maximum of their policy. Okay?
Okay.
Ms. Maun?
Okay.
So that's items six and seven. We had some discussions about the tornado sirens. Several locations have already been identified. One additional location has given us a little bit of a challenge, and that was at Waterson Park, and we have in there, and I'm sure we'll have the fire chief or somebody will make some sections on that, but let's see.
It's item four. I apologize, it's out of order. Out of order in the regular agenda.
But in this particular case, what we're doing is in the park, at Waterson Park, which is over there in Stratfordshire subdivision, about halfway down on the right-hand side is where they're trying to place it, and to be able to do that, we have to work with George Power, who owns that easement, and that's authorizing us to not only place it there, but to negotiate and sign the contracts to allow us to do that. And any potential issues there? Ms. Tran?
No comment.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any issues with that placement? I mean, that's in your subdivision.
Okay, as far as, what is the volume on that again for the sirens?
It's loud. You mean that kind of volume? But it only cast 15 seconds once a month.
Okay.
But I don't know that we have a measurable volume, do we, Chief?
It's on the map, though, you know, if you're day, decimals, but unless you know what the decimal level is, it really doesn't weight you anything.
And don't forget that at a certain time, too, like Wednesday, then.
Yeah, what is the day of the week?
That's the current time we do it.
Yeah.
So most of the time, once you get accustomed to Wednesday, then you get the clear skies, you kind of know it's just a test. Maun?
I have no problem.
Okay. Hope I didn't miss anybody. But are you good, Ms. Dean? You good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. Then the other thing that we still have on the agenda is going to be, and this is kind of a new item, and that's number nine, and we could have the chief, you could actually explain this one just a little bit, unless they've been brought to speed, or we'll load it on a formal, but I just want them to have a good discussion before we get there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Might not be good for pictures of the outside.
I was contacted a couple of weeks ago from the Clayton State University Police Chief, and he shared some statistics with me on some car crashes in the area of Clayton State Boulevard at North Lake. Currently, when a call for service goes out in that location, Clayton State University Police Department responds and handles that crash report. I did some data searching, and I only had six crashes in a five-year period, but he gave me the numbers, 2016, there were two, 17, five, 18, six, 2019, 13, and they're all motor crashes with injuries. So he expressed some concern looking at a total of 32 crashes in a five-year period, and he wanted to know if the city would be agreeable to put up a stop sign on Clayton State Boulevard at North Lake.
Okay, so does everyone, I don't know how much information they have about it, and they're packing by chance. Okay, so you know where North Lake Drive is, the street right before you go on the other side, and the railroad tracks, and then you have local street on the other side? Would be putting a stop sign to basically, you know, not only slow traffic down, but allow some pedestrians to walk across. One of the MARTA staffs used to be over there, too, if I was still here. You know, so the idea is, we've already done, you know, one stop sign on Pleasant Valley for, you know, traffic-related issues, and I've seen some footage where the speed to drive down that road is pretty high, and we know that we have not on pedestrians, but bicycles and other things, and it's almost on, like, state university's campus. So for the most part, we're going to call it the college either way. They made the request. Are there any questions? Ms. Tran?
Questions?
Ms. Dean?
I'm sorry, what was your?
I just want to see if anybody needs any information or additional information for the stop sign request at Clayton State Boulevard.
Well, I agree, it does need a stop sign over there, because I'm at the community guard over there, I speak for police, and that I do see transit racing on that street, so I agree with that there needs to be something done over there.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
No additional information needed.
Okay, Ms. Maun? Okay, all right, thank you. Going into the next line, COVID-19, basically an update.
Mayor Lampel, I apologize. Did you want to touch on the DMO?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my fault. A designated marketing organization, we did an RFQ out for that process, we actually did two. One was related to basically social media, and we got several responses back from that. A designated marketing organization, we only have two. One is actually a DMO, a company out of Jonesboro. The request is really to create MARAs, you know, and we have an additional request, or not a request, but we've got a full proposal. And hang on a second, I'll say that again.
Clarity.
Claire Consulting Group, and that's Mr. John Brooks, and what he would be offering to do for us is basically an hourly rate to basically set it up.
I'm sorry.
So in that particular case, just hiring a DMO doesn't necessarily help MARAs tremendously. Creating your own and working with our own businesses to be able to put them on a board of directors, to be able to facilitate how to spend those funds, which is how it was done years and years ago, but that particular business has been discontinued through the state, so we can't use that before. So if I had a choice, I would want to create MARAs and then put our business leaders on that board to designate how those funds are spent versus picking somebody else's where they have their own leadership, they have their own costs, and basically what you're talking about, buying and adding a magazine, you might have a lot of control over those results. We're not going to have a bunch of control over our business owners either, but at least they have a like-minded interest. They have a business here, operate here, and I think we're reasonably successful with the first one at the beginning, they got a handle there, I get that. But that doesn't mean we have to use them if they get crazy again. It just says, you know, a lot of smart stuff. So from that standpoint, is there any questions related to that one? Ms. Tran? Because that one's a choice. You either pick the DMO itself, or we try to create one through John Brooks, and those are the only two proposals you have. And you have to have a DMO.
No.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
I mean, if we're searching for a DMO and we get submissions that clearly state they're not DMOs, I understand what you're, what you just said with regard to your desire, but if we've requested information for established DMOs and we all have received one?
Well, the request, your RFQ basically gathers two qualifications. It's not an RFP. Your RFQ is basically, you know, you pick the one that works for you the best, and then you negotiate from there to make it happen. In this particular case, you have one that is a DMO, and the other one is basically working with us to create a DMO. Two entirely different concepts, but the one the city needs is created, so.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
So I appreciate you going through the definition of the RFQ and the RFP, the difference between the two, but again, the question was originally, would you kind of circle back around to within your response, with your preference being that we create one?
Correct.
Well, if I may, and for the council members that are here with us, that were here last year, if we remember, we talked a lot about how do we get a DMO in place that isn't going to suck up all of our money, because we have more expenses allowable by law than we have money for. So the, one of the things to think about when you're making a decision, and why we might recommend the person who's going to create it for us, is they're not, it's not going to cost us as much money to hire their staff, so we have more money left for our program. So just wanted to share that.
Does that make sense? It may not change your opinion, I just wanted to make sure you're, don't have other questions. Ms. Knight?
That it, Ms. Knight?
Okay, Ms. Dean?
So in your opinion, how this, Brooke, is that, they, what, they are already that we need a possible one?
No, what we would basically do is hire him either like as a finance officer or as an attorney, where you hire a person on an hourly rate, which he's laid out in his proposal. We authorize the staff to basically negotiate a milestone, which basically sets our deliverable as to basically enter all the information that's necessary to create the DMO. And let's just say that we think that's 20 hours' worth of service at his rate, and we say, all right, between that plus incidental, let's say anywhere between $2,500 and $3,500. And then we have a deliverable that's going to be delivered to the city tomorrow, and that may be all we ultimately pay up, you know? If we want more service, then we can pay for more service. But for right now, to be able to just enter the information, have the guy, you know, set up your tax EIN numbers and other types of things, that's what we would be providing. We have the SOQ, we engage that, we authorize a milestone and a dollar number to negotiate it out and try to get the deliverable. Does that make sense?
Well, um. Um, if it does, then we're going to get what we need from there.
If we don't, he's not going to make a lot of money. And that's why you set a milestone up, boy. That's why you set up a milestone. It's like, this is the service I'm paying for, and that's what he's, just like any other contractor you hire. In this case, it's more paperwork driven, but if I was filing for a permit, we'd do the exact same thing. We hire a contractor to basically, you know, file that permit on our behalf, and we pay them an hourly rate up to a certain amount, and it's something that happens a pretty good bit, so it's not like we're creating, we, I don't anticipate the first section of this being extremely expensive, and then once we have it, you'll get a chance to decide whether we can do the second phase on our own, or whether we would initiate them to help us partially or to do the whole thing, so that we ultimately have a full board of directors with bylaws, so that they operate, similar to other boards that we had.
Right, I understand that.
So I see the difference. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Cal, from the Dean.
No, no, go ahead.
What I was going to comment on is the difference, the main difference that I see between the one organization that's already an established 501(c)(6) and Brooke is the law background. So are we, are we willing to start this off from scratch and have a consultant per se that doesn't necessarily have an understanding of the law to this degree that we need for an organization, considering the funds that will be used? I mean, I think it's, we still need to take a deeper look and have a discussion on what was submitted, because there is a big difference between what was submitted with regard to being an established 501(c)(6) and the idea of us creating our own.
Okay. I would say this, though, I don't need an attorney to operate a chamber of commerce. That's what a 501(c)(6) for this type of organization is. Other comments?
But then again, I miss the whole.
No, I mean, basically, from an organizational standpoint, the background as an attorney is irrelevant, is being able to either, as a DMO, that could have been anybody, that's just the ability to have a 501(c)(6), having the individual enter the information.
You may say from an organizational standpoint, but from an operational standpoint and under understanding the nuances there, it will still be a difference.
That's true, but you know, your chambers of commerce or your business bureaus or other types of things, the vast majority of the people that are on those boards are managers of hotels and hotels, managers of restaurants, you know, people who, you know, basically have some local business. That's not to say you couldn't pick an attorney that's a local business owner, but in this particular case, it's not a local business. It's not a MARAs business, that's for sure.
There is a difference, and I appreciate you pointing out that difference.
Okay. No, I don't. Any questions, Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Maun?
No questions.
Okay. So that was the last one of the DMO. Got another question? I'll go to operate. All right, so this is one of the next item on the COVID-19, just an update on some things that have happened. I don't know if the city manager did that. They did a tremendous amount of work from the interim staff in being able to line up the Georgia National Guard and the testing site over there, and they deserve a lot of credit for the heroic efforts that they did to pull it off, but if you'll explain it.
So for those who don't know yet, and we were able to get the Department of Defense to, once they made the announcement on the news, I think it was literally last Monday night, we reached out to them, the Augusta University, and because we were one of the first cities that contacted them, we were able to get them to come and set up a test site here within 48 hours, virtually. So it took a lot of collaboration, as the mayor mentioned, Jasmine from working from home, the police chief, the fire chief and their teams, Public Works Department, and everybody getting it ready, because there was a long list of stuff they had to have. While they had most of it, there were just some little things, water sources, power sources. It was just, it was, I was been, I was very impressed with us as a team that we were able to make those connections and it just jump on. It was really Jasmine's first jump on it, and, you know, 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock on Monday night, I'm talking to some colonel from the National Guard, from the Department of Defense, and the next thing you know, we have a testing site. So it was pretty exciting, and, you know, of course, it comes from a great push from Mayor Lampel, who is, as I've told you all before, and I will tell you all again, the mad scientist in the basement trying to figure this whole thing out for the citizens of Marlborough. So it was just a great collaborative effort, and it was a real good feeling to see it come to fruition.
Excellent, good job. Any questions or any comments on that?
No, okay.
Ms. Tran, any questions on testing? Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, I do have a question regarding the test site here in Marlborough. I contacted a number, and I was told that I could not go to that facility unless I exhibited consent. So is this still that, or is this just what is the protocol for that facility?
So for anybody who saw the posting on the website or Facebook or when you get your newsletter, we talked a lot about an app, and I think, Dorothy, you called the phone number because the app wasn't working for you, or something along those lines. Well, in the last 48 hours, that test site has now become a drive-in and a walk-in site, so you do not have to have a pre-existing appointment. Now, because I don't know of a test site that allows you to come up with no level of screening, you will still drive in and be screened by a doctor there in the parking deck. From that moment, they will again decide if you're going to progress into the testing area, but since, you know, we don't really, anything, Chief?
They have not turned a single person away for any testing. People coming in from Marla, people driving up without a woman, nobody gets turned away. Everybody is seen.
As of yesterday?
As of yesterday.
Okay, okay. And part of that is, like I was explaining to Mayor Lampel, I've been fascinated that I can't seem to get any testing site on the phone that actually has more people than they have tests. Now, we know that exists, we hear about it on the news every day, but to Callaway, we were prepared for how many patients a day?
Upwards of 300 a day.
And we're seeing as many only as?
50 to 60.
Yeah, so they're, they're going to constantly expand the way you can access it to get those numbers up, because the governor has made it very clear that his decision-making relies on good test data. So as of yesterday, you can drive up to the test site or walk in, you will be seen by, or talk to a doctor there, but Callaway is recording.
You'll tele-doctor.
Yeah, oh, a tele-doctor, okay.
Tele-doctor, right there.
But nobody has been turned away, especially now, because the numbers are so low right now. So of course, it's new, we're still getting the marketing out there, but, so Dorothy, I encourage you to go again and see what your experience is and let us know, so we can tweak it from our end if we need to.
Also, one thing, too, I wanted to brag about the city, not only for starting to set this up, it's been my pleasure, my honor to be a part of this, doing our duty in public city, but we were prepared months ago, based on your leadership with PPE, we pre-bought a bunch of PPE, we're to the point now, I'm meeting with the nurses every morning when I get up there, and they're low on their PPE, I'm able to give them some of ours, because our numbers look so good.
Yeah, and Fire Chief Swett was able to use his connections with, what's it called? The place, the biohazard box place?
Oh, I forget the name of it.
Stericycle?
Stericycle?
Stericycle, because that was one of the components that was critical to the test site was, they had to have the ability to store during the day and remove those biohazard, I guess, failed tests or whatever. So his connection got them, you know, right down the road from Jonesboro, or Forest Park, maybe, a connection for them to cycle that through. So, you know, again, that and the water source and the power, the things that Public Works was able to help bring online, it was just, it was, it was cool, it was awesome, we got it done, so.
Right, good, excellent, good job. Well, and.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we promoting to the citizens to still wear their masks and do, and continue to do the safety promotion?
Yes, ma'am. The guidelines are going to continue for a while. You know, if you're above the age of 60 and you catch this virus, you have some real serious days ahead of you, and, you know, you want to be able to make sure that, you know, pay attention, you know, go to those stores when they have the senior hours early in the morning, if there's no reason for you to stay out until, you know, either a virus or a vaccine has been produced, and that could be a while. So just be careful, and, you know, yes, the state of Georgia is opening, it's opening slower than most people think, you know, they read the news and they think, you know, we're going to start having rock concerts out there, and that's not true. The individual businesses are suffering tremendously, these folks are going to go bankrupt, and it's going to have a multiplier effect. So when they open, they're opening in some cases with less than 20 to 25% of their population. You can't, you're not making your payroll, you're not making your rent payment, you're just not being, you know, damaged as much, all right? But if you're in a high-risk situation, you still don't want to be that person that's going out there doing that. If you're, you know.
Well, I mean, if I may, that's a high-risk situation that we still do not know about asymptomatic, and people who have been infected and gotten over it, whether, you know, they are still immune to it, they can spread. Those are the two questions that have not been answered, and that's why I am still very concerned.
And you should be. Now, when we're having discussions about the antibodies test, you know, that's the question, that's whether you are, you know, that you've already been sick and you develop the antibodies. There's lots of discussions about, you know, whether you truly have immunity or not, that's what happens when you have a new virus, is we honestly don't have all the answers, and no one wants to go out there and tell you 100%, sure, you know, go out there, you know, and you're going to be safe, because this is not true. So that's where the personal responsibility has to come in, not only for yourself, but to your neighbors, you know? Put the mask on, you know, in most environments. I'm not expecting you to wear that in your restaurant while you're eating. If you're sitting in a meeting like this, one where people have to talk, you know, a lot of precautions have been taken, we're pretty reasonable people. Everyone came into this room, had their temperatures taken. Everyone came into this room, had their temperatures taken. You're seeing that happen in each one of the businesses. And that through the next line item also is, you know, our retailers are slowly but surely making their changes, you know, so that they have plexiglass in front of them. You know, a number of people are wearing, you know, gloves, probably not appropriately, to be honest with you, for all the things they touch. But certainly remarkably better than what it was, right? And you're seeing other states now start to open. You know, the governor took, you know, a lot of heat, you know, for stepping into some things. You know, that's his comp, he's the governor. But, you know, as a city, you know, we're looking at trying to be responsible. You know, when the different places opened, we made sure that they got a copy of the rules. And we explained, you know, we're here to watch. Not necessarily make your business difficult, but just to let you know we want everybody to be safe if we possibly can. So this is starting with it, not bad. We still have a long ways to go. The next item on the, was the stop sign? We've already had some discussion about this stop sign. Was there?
I should have removed it after it was put on the regular agenda.
Okay. And we're going to start with some discussions on some budget matters. We have the new CFO sitting here in front of us. And the idea, of course, is to start to get some updates on the current impacts to this fiscal year budget and start to lay out the progress to being able to lay out next year's budget. And we'll do that in a series of items. And rather than just kind of picking shoes, I'll ask Ms. Angela to kind of start us off and tell us what she has.
Well, right now, actually, as far as the general fund is concerned, although I would say like a lot of the businesses that haven't paid their occupational taxes were down roughly about six hundred thousand dollars there. But we had some significant overages earlier in the year from like things like insurance premium taxes that went over what we budgeted and everything right now. So right now, the general fund is actually operating at a gain of one point three million dollars, whatever. So which, yeah, was really good for us.
That's awesome.
It is. But the department heads, you can tell they've been really keeping expenditures down because they're only like seven point four million versus the revenue, which is eight point three.
And if I may, just remember, Mayor, when you all discussed this in January, we really put a high, not just a hiring freeze, but a spending freeze in place. So we've been very responsive to that. You know, of course, at the time, we didn't even understand that COVID was, well, some of us, me, didn't understand that COVID was going to be impacting us. So fortuitously, we had already subsided a lot of spending that wasn't just necessary until you guys, the new council members, had a chance to get on board and sort of get their feet wet and see what we wanted to do. And I will credit the staff and to being responsive for that spending freeze for that situation, so.
So can we get some, you know, numbers on like your sales tax drop for, say, March?
Sales tax?
I know it's a month behind, so it might not be exact.
Actually, I already looked it up though. For March, we've collected about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which is pretty good.
What was our projection? What was our?
I'm not sure what the projection was, right off the bat. Yeah, I can't remember what the projection was right off the bat. But, I mean, right now, as far as the loss, though, you're, actually, I take that back. You are running about thirty-two thousand dollars. If I compare the month-to-month revenue from FY two thousand nineteen to FY two thousand twenty and like where we were at March thirty-first, we are like about thirty-two thousand dollars behind. So it's like I said, that kind of started like in September, a little bit, like two months, probably in last year during the fall or whatever. You had like a couple of months that were kind of a little short, shorter than they normally were or something like that.
But that would be before the virus.
That was before, right, exactly. That was before the virus and stuff like that, yeah.
But what we're seeing, depending on which industry you're in, if you're in the airline industry, it's horrific.
Right, exactly, exactly.
If you're Walmart, the answer is probably not much.
Right, because they're packed.
Right, but then based on our numbers, so it just kind of says. And then, of course, we only get a small percentage of what the entire county gets. So then, this is one of the few times where you could make the argument that Marrow gets probably the lowest percentage except for maybe Jonesboro or Lake City. But in this case, it'll actually work to your advantage because it's a smaller percentage.
Will you move the hand up and call back? Hi, do you have the answer? I don't have the answer.
Okay, the answer is she can't hear.
Are you saying this? She doesn't have any connection?
She does.
Are you seeing that?
Okay.
Looks like they didn't look at the phone.
Yeah, because it's what you found.
I was trying to tell them the sign, I had them not hear that.
Oh, we hear you, ma'am.
Yeah, it could probably see you fall.
That's all right.
Yeah, we're hearing you, but we're trying to resolve it, so. Okay, let me, let me carry on. What do you think it is?
Yeah, it's not true.
They can hear it.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's not that they're not hearing you at all, it's that they can't understand you? What does Van Den Ove say?
I can't hear him.
I think she said they can't hear. Who is it you can't hear? Is it me you can't hear or is it Angela you can't hear? Van, can you hear him at all?
Good evening. This is Mayor Derek Fadilin. I hope that you are well. As I mentioned in my April twenty-fifth message, these are extremely challenging times that have impacted each of us in different ways. Some are suffering because of COVID.
That would be the conference call this morning.
I got sort of there.
Yeah. Like a local call or something?
Who was it? Somebody on?
We know our phones just has a tendency to voice report.
Okay, so this is.
Not necessarily because you want to, because it does.
If we disconnect that phone and they really go in through their cell phone, as if they're not sitting here, but they're also remote and calling in that system.
That's a problem.
Okay. But still, it doesn't resolve the whole issue, right? So do we want them to call in from their cell phone instead and leave that disengaged? To see how that works? Other, the audience? Well, I mean, it'll still be on WebEx. It's just, I'm saying that maybe these two should call into WebEx instead of just using the microphone.
We are just using the phone, yes.
Which is not working well. I'm suggesting this as an alternative. No? Anybody else think that's?
No, no.
Bueller?
I mean, it wasn't years on the conference. One thing's backed up to another for time, but as long as it works, it doesn't matter to us.
Let me leave that microphone there.
Leave that microphone there, okay. So what is the mayor of?
Can you hear us now?
Oh, they're back.
All right, well, we will.
Ask Councilwoman Dean and Knight if they can hear.
Ms. Dean, Ms. Knight, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, well, I hung up on the conference call. So we know that part's not working.
Yeah.
I'm not hearing that through the redundancy of the original.
Right, so we need to turn that back on then, did you?
Yeah, we can turn that back on because we kind of used close system.
Okay.
All right. Something's working.
I think that's missing.
We lost the connection since Angela got it.
Okay, so what, just paraphrasing a little bit. She said, I don't know exactly where you lost it, but we were having discussions as of the month over, well, hyper, there.
Well, I was saying that the general fund operating, the operating revenues are exceeding expenditures. About right now, we're at like one point three million over, which has increased our fund balance from ten million up to twelve, even despite, like I said, the occupational taxes revenues somewhat being behind. But earlier in the year, there was a lot of other revenue line items that came in above that. So that's helped tremendously. That includes the property taxes and things. So that's really helped to kind of absorb some, a little bit of this loss. Plus, you know, you still have like another month or so before the occupational taxes due, which is June the first and something like that.
And because those are based on last year, impact won't be there.
Right, exactly.
Next year that we have the best.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But both your sales tax will have at least a three or four month impact, even if we lose, thirty's a lot. I mean, that's like a twenty-five, thirty percent drop.
Right.
But you were telling me thirty over a five-month period, that wasn't a month over a month, right?
Right, right, exactly, and stuff like that.
And it might be earlier because how they collect it and where it comes back.
Back from.
It only had an impact for a couple of months.
That's right, exactly.
But certainly that will be one to watch, not only for the budget for next year from that, but also we have some splot projects, but that's a dollar-for-dollar match, right? We made one percent of one percent in our hour.
Right, exactly, exactly. And things like that. But overall, the funds are looking pretty well. The only one, of course, that's in the negative is the Marrow Center right now. But that's, I mean, that makes sense because you're not really probably having that many conferences and things like that going on.
It's closed.
Yeah, exactly. You have anything going on. So right now, it is operating in the red. A hundred, it's a negative one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and things like that. And as you can see, I'm jumping back over to the hotel motel. There's still that net gain of one eighty-nine. Half of that is going to go into the general fund. So that's another ninety thousand dollars that's going to go over to the general fund to kind of bring that, that net gain up to one point four million and stuff. So financially, we're doing really well. And like the city manager, I don't know if you've heard her before, she was saying like even prior to, I guess, April or something like that, you all were slowing down and the departments were slowing down their spending and whatever. So that's helped us tremendously and stuff. Because normally we're spending about, with salaries and everything, the bulk of our operating costs, we're spending roughly around a million dollars or so a month or something, so. This is tremendous. And as of, I know as of, at least by the end of March, our cash balances are like at thirteen million dollars, over thirteen million, so.
That's collective, though, every, every fund?
Yes, that's every fund, yes. That's every fund for the most part.
All right. Any questions related to sales tax? Ms. Trank?
I want to, did I miss? Because I couldn't hear Angela really as well.
Oh, about the sales tax?
Talk this type in and out. I hear you very, but it's hard to understand what she's saying.
I need you to literally talk this into the situation, even hold it if you want.
Okay, all right. Well, what I said to them earlier about the sales tax, the lost sales tax, is that right now, we're trending, if I compare it month-to-month, FY two thousand nineteen collections to FY two thousand twenty, we're roughly about thirty-two thousand dollars behind. But like I was saying earlier, that the loss in that reduction or whatever, it started before the coronavirus. It actually started back in like September of last year, where one month it started, it was down about roughly over five thousand dollars. Then you had another month that was down too, oddly around, it was around the holiday season or something like that. So that, the loss was just trending downward anyway. But with the, I guess, with the stimulus, with the stimulus money out there and the, I think also with the unemployment payments people are receiving. Some people are making more in unemployment, right, with that extra money coming in than they were making working or whatever. And so it seems like your Wal-Mart's always packed and stuff like that. People are out spending. They're, you know, going grocery shopping and doing those types of things, so.
The volume on for Angela is very low. I can really not understand what she's saying.
Call them, I'll give them the phone. Call them, where's, okay. Councilwomen, we are going to have Angela call in to the conference call from her phone, which may resolve the hearing. Her voice is not nearly as obnoxiously bold as mine.
Wake up my last night. Because I would like to hear directly from the finance director some of the things that she's been able to dig into and get caught up to speed with herself. So I would really prefer to hear it from her.
We'll figure it out. I mean, everybody's got patience. You know, this is going on for five months, maybe a couple of meetings.
Yeah, but obviously, we all agree that we've been anxiously awaiting your arrival. Everybody wants to hear what you're saying. We want to make sure everybody has that opportunity.
All right, let's try this.
But she's dialled in.
Yeah, she's on.
Okay, all right, okay. Can you hear me now? Yes.
Can you hear? She's actually on the phone through the conference call for you, so that should help.
Oh, okay, all right.
Let's make sure they can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can you hear her?
Yes.
Ms. Trank?
Yes, but I cannot identify who we're talking to.
Well, in a minute, it'll be her. And then you just pick up the phone and just talk to her like normal because we didn't.
Yeah, they're waiting near you. That's right.
That's right, okay. So would you like to repeat what I was saying about the sales tax, the loss?
Yes, please.
If you would not mind, please.
Okay, so the loss of revenue right now, for the month of, at the end of March, what March was, the single left of four thousand dollars.
It's really good.
But overall, the sales tax, those sales taxes are trending behind about thirty-two thousand dollars compared month-to-month to what you were collecting last year. But this happened before the coronavirus took place. That kind of started in the month of September. And also, there was another month, I think, during the holidays at what, for some reason, whatever, that the revenue came in lower or whatever. But for me, though, I really think that that's going to, or I think it's going to overcome that thirty-two thousand dollar loss because people are out there spending, even though they're not working right now. The money that's the stimulus money coming in and the extra six hundred dollars unemployment, people are making more money, some of them, than they would normally make in a week anyway. And they're out there spending that money, which is why I guess the government did that anyway to kind of keep the economy going. So I think we're going to recover those losses by the end of, by the end of June because we actually have, until the, probably the month of, probably end of July or whatever, is when we will, I will go back and record that last, that last monthly collection of the sales tax back into this fiscal year. Prior to that, I was also saying that the general fund is operating in the black. If I add the, there's additional about roughly about ninety-seven thousand dollars that the hotel motel fund owes back to the general fund. And that would actually bring the general fund's gains up to about one point four million dollars. So you're, we're normally spending, before I got here, spending roughly around about a million dollars a month. But a lot of that was just, was salary and benefits. And we still have that. That's not going to go anywhere right now. But apparently, the department heads have kind of, they've reduced their, a lot of their other operating costs and some, probably some of their capital as well because we still have some monies left and some capital funds that haven't been spent yet as well. So the department's been really conservative with it. Your other sales tax is coming in pretty much close to where it should be. But this splot may be about two months behind, so that's a little bit trickier to tell. The one fund that you do have is operating in the red is the Marrow Center. Right now, they're at a negative one hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. The overall cash by the end, for the whole month, accumulated the month of March, we were at thirteen point eight million dollars in cash. And that includes cash of pretty much all the funds. But for the general fund alone, we had posted ten, over, a little over ten million dollars there. So cash-wise, we're doing like really well. And I would say that in a times like this, I, you want to have a pretty solid, I guess, reserve on hand. So I think ten million dollars and considering your cash and your budget is around ten million dollars. So you're doing pretty well, I think. But still, we don't know how long this virus or whatever is going to go on. So I think for us to continue to kind of be frugal or whatever with the spending is going to help the city in the long run. I think I've been spending most of my time since I got here trying to prepare for the budget and getting the budget packets out. And department heads started returning the budget packets to me today. Today and some point yesterday as well. And this week, the city manager and I will be meeting with them on Thursday and Friday to kind of go over their budgets. And, yes. And then I think on the other hand, there's some other things. There's some, just in looking, there's some things that I want to sit down and I guess speak with our auditor about, about some things they kind of may have overlooked that I think that should have been addressed. I know that, I think what Marlowe and Dick is, is we've been here for a while. And I think they're a good firm. They're a great resource because they offer free training to the staff that's in very detail, particularly like there's a lot of GASP pre-announcements that are coming up. And several of them right now is going to impact the city as of June thirtieth regarding leases and stuff like that. And you have to do a lot of analysis on a lease, on a lease or something where we're leasing a vehicle or something like that, which a lot of governments are getting into to save money. Instead of, you just, you know, you just, you think you're saving money. You don't have to worry about the expense and all this kind of stuff. Now with those new GASP pre-announcements, they're requiring you to book it and do depreciation and amortization and stuff on, all this complicated stuff. So. So Martin Jenkins is good about doing that, I think, but I think that probably it may be time for the city, you can switch up the, the team of people that come out here and maybe get a fresh group of people come out here that can maybe get a fresh set of eyes on things, I think. Um, so that's one of, some of the things I want to talk to the audience about, if that's a thing with you guys. Um, what else?
Who's asked them to have any questions?
Oh, and.
Ask them to have any questions?
Okay, I was going to ask you if y'all had any questions, but another thing too that I've noticed, uh, particularly last week, I really, the software that we have, we, it's, it's not, it's not functional or it's not a functional software. I'm finding that a lot of the stuff that we're doing is, people are just doing everything manually still. You're, you're still manually entering your cash receipts, uh, although they're taking money upfront, then somebody's got to turn around and give it to somebody else and give, give it to an employee in the back and they're, they're keying, manually keying them in. The same thing with the sanitation, when you're doing the same, when you're doing the billing for that, the same thing is having to be manually keyed in instead of it being automatic and automated in the system and stuff. And, you know, right now with us trying to kind of downside and reduce the number of employees we have in those costs, you need a functional financial system, you need something that's reliable. And that system there is, it's, it's, it's not user friendly. Uh, if I want to, uh, and trying to put the budget information together and also trying to do some trend analysis and pull data out, I'm having to close the system every time I want to go pull data on a year because it won't let you pull multiple, like, like multiple years, three or four years at a time or something. Even it'll let you, and the budget module allow you to pull two years or whatever, like the previous, but other than that, it's, 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 so that tells me there's, that's not like a real, I would say, real functional software, because software's just don't, they don't operate that way. They allow you to be able to go back and to be able to pull up a screen, if I want to look at loss history for the past ten years, pull up a line out of it and see all my, my year-to-date collections and the budget amount for years going back, and that software is, is just, it doesn't do that. And also it needs to be, uh, a lot more friendly in a sense of being able to, I guess, allow us to extract data out of it and put it into Excel easier than we're, we're having to do right now, uh, so that we can manipulate, or I would say manipulate, manipulate, but move it, yeah, I guess, I, I guess I would say manipulate the information around so that we can use it in different formats and, and be able to, uh, answer people's requests for information quickly and everything like that. Um, and, uh, and, does anybody have any questions for me or anyone?
Yes, how did you, how did you come up with the number for the current year, twenty? Did that come from the actual certain, actual number of certain ones and then the estimated for the rest of the month?
For which number?
For which number?
Oh, for all the numbers for the budget, how did you come up with the current, the number for the current?
I remember she doesn't have this one in front of her.
Oh, she doesn't have that on her, oh, okay, oh, this is the actual, the information I have, it was the actual.
Yeah, she gave us a, a piece of paper in front of us, man.
Yeah, I, I had a, I did a, I was afraid that we can send out to the city manager, I was taking a photograph of it.
Photograph of it.
Yeah, but the information, the numbers that I was speaking of, yeah, those are the actual, as of, I would say, through to, through, probably through yesterday. I ran it today, I'm in, um, when they closed out today, those numbers that the money we collected today is probably, is not posted yet. You know, so you've got like a delay and you're not, we're not able to keep up with, with, on, on, I guess, a real-time basis, like the actual transactions or whatever they were taking, whatever they were taking place. And one of the things I spoke with Vaughn about, uh, software wise, was to look at the software, we look at the software going forward, is something that's going to be more cloud-based, because one, you don't have to have that, you don't have to worry about having that, that server here to house it. If something happens, this building is blown away, you don't have to worry about it, your software is off somewhere up in the clouds or somewhere. It makes it easier for people to work remotely and it's also less expensive as well. So, um, you know, if the, if it's approved in the budget, that is something we kind of, we'd like to look at. And then also we need some software that's going to allow people to, uh, I guess, be able to provide services, I guess, that's a little bit more automated or whatever to them and be able to have more opportunities for people to make online payments and things like that, um, that is going to be more convenient for them as well. Um, and then, uh, because I think sometimes if you, you try to piecemeal some of your credit card processing services and you do this over here and you do this over there, it's harder to negotiate and get the, get the cost down. Um, because that was one of the things I liked about the, um, the, the online, uh, service that we just approved today or will approve or whatever tonight, is that some of those fees are being passed on to the customer. And, you know, people like me, it's like, I just, I take, I don't go online, I don't like to go online, it's like, I've been online on the computer all day and I want to, I take the phone and make payments over the phone, it's going to cost me two dollars and five, I don't care, it's convenient, I'll, I'll do it. So people like me will do that, and because one of the things is if the, when a city, I would say, is absorbing those costs, and I think you were talking about that last week and, and I don't know, some of you would fore, see, I guess, maybe take, absorb the costs and some will not, but I can tell you this, those fees are like really expensive, uh, because we have a lot of credit card processes, um, where, where it came from. And if we were bringing in roughly a little over three hundred thousand dollars from like, in one, from, from one credit card processing company, we were paying more than nineteen thousand dollars out of that three hundred thousand dollars in credit card processing fees and stuff. So it's expensive, trust me. Um, so that's one, one reason why it is kind of best if you are going to have a credit card process, a, a, a lot of that process to, um, to take place in your city, it is best to kind of pass those fees on to the customers that, like I said, they pretty much don't mind it over time. It's more, it's probably more absorbable for them than it is for, for us, because you have several different credit card processes and that nineteen thousand dollars times another, you've got another fifteen of those, it gets to be really expensive e- each month or something like that. But does anyone have any questions for me?
Mayor, I just emailed.
So I just got the email on the information.
You just said.
Yeah, I think, I understand it, too.
Okay.
Yes.
That was, that was a little more accurate.
The, the most current revenue is expenditure where are we with bank rec? And also.
Bank reconciliation.
Bank reconciliation.
Bank rec, oh, bank rec.
And also, uh, there is no general entry for approval on the expenses, how would that affect the numbers that's showing up this year?
Okay, well, normally, first with the bank reconciliation, I believe she's up to the month of February with the bank reconciliation. Uh, the month of January, she's off about a thousand dollars someplace. But here, when you're doing manual journal entries all the time or trying to post stuff and not let the system do it automated, you're going to have problems like that. Um, so, but for her, I told her to keep moving forward with it and then as she, you know, to, to kind of keep the, get the, get the, um, bank accounts reconciled. And so at some point before, I'll always go back and look at the bank reconciliations and go back through the stuff myself and I should maybe hopefully be able to find that thousand dollars or whatever and find a place to record it or something like that. Um, but for right now, it's more important for her to keep moving forward with the bank recs and getting everything posted that she can get in there.
Okay, so, so we want to make sure that Councilwoman Tran got the answer, does she understand?
At core transaction, uh, journal entries, there are no journal entry were written in, in March. Except one.
She's, she's, obviously, so she's had this afternoon or, uh, Ms. Tran's got some additional information. So what she basically asked is a question off of that, not necessarily of what she just said.
Oh, okay.
So basically, it would be a general entry section, it wasn't done for, completed for March, I guess, is the question I hear.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think, I didn't look at, I saw like, just, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, I kind of, I didn't look in detail at the few journal entries that you were looking at in March, but I know that there's still, um, one of the staff account is still trying to catch up on some things. Um, on one hand, there, I would say this, the previous finance director made journal entries for just about everything, she said. Um, whereas, say for example, if you have like an electronic payment came into the, hit the bank account or whatever, instead of, uh, instead of running that, that process through accounts payable and let the system automatically process it and show it, you know, kind of, and, and just have a trail for it, he would write a journal entry for it. And in, my, my point with the journal entries right now though is that you don't want, the, the goal is not to write, is write journal entries, you need to let the system process, process everything. But like I said, right now she is like running behind. Um, and she is, like, she is, instead of, like I said, she knows to that, instead of doing, doing journal, doing journal entries, journal entries for things, she's trying to set things up, let it process through the system or whatever. Now, why there are only a few in, in March, that, I, that I don't know, but I do know like, uh, last Friday that she was sitting down and posting journal entries and things like that, trying to get some things caught back up from the, say, the month of December or whatever, since the, the previous finance director was. Can I, Mayor? Um, I also just encourage the council to remember that all of our translating for all of our collateral newsletters, posts on Facebook, we have the opportunity to do that in-house and our staff account, Han Kim, uh, of course, B as well, they have worked, I mean, they, they do all the translating. Jasmine does, uh, does all the Spanish, uh, translating, so it, it, because we have put out so much information in the three languages, I think that we just need to remember that when we're talking about scheduling and, and time consumption.
Yeah, that, yeah, that is another, that's another thing, that's, Fred.
We are fortunate enough to have Ms. Hudson, she's now jumped in and clearly from, by my estimation, her comment on the information that she provided this evening, uh, she's jumped up to speed, she's got some analysis, she's providing some insight, I certainly appreciate that. But as a council body, um, I want to forget, I don't want us to forget our role. If it's a matter of forwarding on the SOP and the operational day-to-day, uh, policies to Ms. Tran, um, or all the council just to review and understand how things work, but, um, to get too far deep in the weeds with regards to being a council and operation, I don't want us to get into those waters. Those are trickier waters for the council to swim in. And we also have to be mindful that we need, uh, some time for Ms. Hudson to get completely up to speed. We knew that there were some gaps before she came and she sounds like she's hit the ground running with trying to fill in those gaps, which are going to be critical for the development of the budget for next year.
I afraid I see a clarification and I don't mean to jump into, uh, interfere with their operating at all. It's just a reminding that for us to have a budget group level be the same number with active number, our goal is that to get an, an idea as close as we can and when we drafting the budget, with knowing the fact that we like, we are behind on bank rec, we have not had all these been approved, it is critical to get the closer idea of our income revenue and our expenditure.
Well, I mean, what's. And I appreciate her for that.
Well, I do say, I would say for, for myself, it's like instead of, I haven't touched the ba, I haven't had my hands on the budget since, since Thursday, because I've been working on other stuff, that's not quite priority because we need to get the budget out. But, and I would say the same thing with, uh, with, with my staff account. And she does spend a great deal of time translating, because that's one of the things when I sit down to, to meet with the city manager about the, um, my budget or whatever, we'll see if we can get, find some kind of service or whatever to do some kind of translation or something like that, maybe it's co- contract labor or something. Um, because it is taken away from the, 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 you know, from her being able to concentrate and get and work on the bank recs and kind of do some other things as well. She's, she's noted, she said that to me, and I, and, and we've got like a lot, there's a lot going on. Um, and again, with, when you've got so many transactions that, and modules too, the modules aren't connected to the software, you got software that, that, that's in the same software, but the modules aren't, aren't connected, communicating one another. So you got, she's got to sit back and try to keep track and make sure that all those transactions get posted and things like that. Uh, another thing I wanted to update everyone on is the, I did reach out and I made the steps to reach out to FEMA yesterday to start our, um, to request public assistance, uh, to get funding or whatever from, um, from, from FEMA and from GEMA for the COVID expenses that we're, we're, we've been, uh, are accruing right now. Um, and they did, they called, they called, I heard from GEMA today and, uh, pretty much we're on our own, they said, because the, the virus is so widespread, normally FEMA would send a team or somebody out here and all this kind of stuff, but they're not going to send anyone out, but fortunately, the person that called from GEMA knew me, we've worked together the past couple of years on hurricane disasters when I was down in Tidy. And, um, I already know, I'm familiar with the FEMA's website and portal and with everything that's got to be done and all the data that I've got to update and how to document everything and stuff like that. So the only question was for us was just how much money were, how, about how much did I think our costs are going to be? Because we're able to actually, uh, not only, um, get reimbursed for the supplies and things that we purchased, we can get reimbursed for some of the, um, hours that the public safety employees have spent, particularly if they're on calls, um, you know, um, for COVID patients or say when the government was originally shut down and police officers were riding around, making sure that businesses and things are closed. And for me, the way I made my most, the most money off of, off of FEMA is through equipment usage. So, quit, they have like a list of equipment and they assign hourly rates to different types of equipment, meaning vehicles and fire trucks and name it. So you use that, um, say if an employee, a fire, a fireman said they had to go out on a call or whatever, it was just three hours or something like that, uh, related to maybe a COVID or something case, or a police officer's riding around for, or, or, and for, for like a ten hour, eight or ten hour shift or something like that. Well, I get to, um, request reimbursement for the use of the hourly rate of the, of the, of the vehicle, you know. Uh, I don't know how much a fire truck goes for, but you know, a, a, a vehicle could be fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour. And so that's really how you make your money back from, from FEMA. Um, and then also when they're reimbursing you for your, your salary costs and whatever, it's not like a, just a, a flat rate or whatever, they, they, you're able to add in your benefits, your, your help, your vacation and all those things in there. So it's like, it's a, it's, it's a lot, a lot more than just, you know, your flat, what we're normally paying your employees. We do get a lot more money back or whatever. And I did tell them that we are going to try to request like a hundred percent reimbursement for everything, so. Any questions about anything?
About anything? Um, this is Dorothy Dean, I do have a question on the, uh, software, uh, servers, uh, for the credit card. You did, um, say that you, uh, uh, prefer option A in this package for the, uh, the customer to pay the fee that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And also, um, in this, in, uh, in this contract, again, on page, uh, eleven, I don't know if this is the final, the way it's going to be, but, uh, page eleven that said three-year period is still listed in this contract, so.
Yeah, that may not have the updated contract in there, but they've changed everything. But I had them change the, the, because they were trying to, um, they wanted to litigate if there was any litigation, it was going to be in the state of South Carolina. And I had them change all that to Georgia because we can't sign a contract with something that's not under the law, laws of Georgia, and stuff like that, stuff like that.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's, let's, uh, let's hold off on questions for a second, just stop, um, because we're running behind on the council meeting. I'm, I'm sorry.
I did have one quick question.
Sure.
One quick question.
Okay.
Uh, and, and so you did, I appreciate, you did have the opportunity to look, and so where we stand now with the online payments is month to month, um, and you envision it being compatible with a forward-thinking system that's a lot more agile and cloud-based and, you know.
Yes. Oh, yes, definitely.
I did want you, I figured to review that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going, we're going to try to pick up the, the council meeting, um, and then we'll come back and, uh, we'll ask some questions. So we're running a little long, um, but, does, uh, does everybody need a break or do you just want to continue to go?
Let's go, we got that deadline.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll, we'll call it over, the, uh, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, uh, regular meeting of the city council. Um, I realize we have, uh, 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 from a roll call perspective, all members of the council are present, either from a conference call standpoint or in person. Um, and, uh, we are COVID-nineteen compliant, um, and we're taking temperatures at the door and a number of other things to do that. Uh, that being said, uh, we're going to stand and pledge allegiance and have a moment of silence. So that way she has the ability to go home if she desires. Um, and then we also have additional questions that will be necessary for the, the finance officer. But, but let's start with, um, item number four, Roman numero number five. And obviously this is related to not only the court process for the city tomorrow. There's some impacts that were created by the Supreme Court justice. As you said, all courts are canceled, I think until, what, May 17? Is that correct? 13, I'm sorry. Okay. So basically, court itself as a function in the state has been suspended until May 13. Once May 13 kind of comes, we're, what are we, two months or three months in the furloughs?
Well, the last time we had court was March 4.
Essie, I might as well come to the microphone so we can make sure everybody's hearing.
Okay. So the last official court date that we had here in the city was March 4. So we have a number of people who have to go to court and there were some ideas that we had about how to conduct court and what our expectations will be. And then obviously if we have not conducted court, our fine number should be tragic, right? It's behind and these people will have less money, but we're going to catch up. Also, Miss West?
Well, right now, we're targeting June 1st. But we are reducing the number of defendants in court from maybe 150 to 50 per session. We normally have court the first and third weeks of the month during the month of June. And going forward until we catch up, we'll have it every week on Monday and Wednesday and possibly Thursday, depending on backlog. We are checking into a transmitter so we can have people in the parking lot. The judge will do the opening and we will call the people in probably 10 at a time so we can do the social distance and handle the cases back up.
Can we get a price on that? Is that something that's doable?
Well, so. Technology often comes down to compatibility as an issue, so the cost is surprisingly cheap. It's a one-time payment of $140, quite literally. Now, because of that, we would probably want to buy multiple transmitters because from where the transmitter is set up, let's say that Essie, as the court administrator, is sitting at a transmitter.
Good start. I know what you're talking about, but I'm not sure you're ready online.
So what we're saying is that everybody who comes to the parking lot, like when you go see Christmas lights and you turn your radio to a certain dial, it would be that you get on station, you know, 101.5, whatever it is, and you can hear the court administrator through the transmitter. So you're all sitting in the cars in the parking lot and you're listening to this radio station where our court administrator is communicating with you and also the judge. So the judge would have a transmitter and Essie would have a transmitter, maybe more because again, they're only $150. So if the judge gives his, what does you call it, preamble, the introduction, then Essie would call on the people sitting in the car and call them in, but not, you know, one at a time. You stage them. You call somebody and they stand here and then the next person advances and you call somebody else and they stand here. And we keep them all, it would be probably a more severe distance than six feet to make sure we're all, you know, feeling safe. And then probation would either be set up in the community room or on a different day. It wouldn't be in the same room with court like we do now. And then that's how we would handle it. Now, we will start with 50 because we're trying, we would want to test to make sure the transmitter, everybody can hear it clearly. But if we get a transmitter that can reach 3,000 feet instead of 200, for example, we may could expand to 100 spaces. But we don't want to do that until we have a good handle on the smaller number. So again, as court administrator Wes said, is that we've got a big backlog. So we can't just do twice a week, two times a month. Starting June, we'll be doing twice or three times a month every week until we get this ball rolling. But remember, on the other side of the equation, the police department is writing 27% fewer tickets. So the backlog won't be as, now, before the Corona started, everybody, we rescheduled immediately. It was still in the law. But moving from that date to this, which is March and April, the ticket volume has reduced by 27%.
Any questions? Ms. Knight?
No questions, I heard her.
Ms. Dean?
As far as people coming into the courtroom and using facilities, are any of those things going to be open?
No, well, the public restrooms are currently not open and, you know, I guess that's really a decision for the council. Yeah, guys know that you would have court without a restroom. We would encourage people not to bring people with them, but only the defendant, that's what you call them, is getting out of the car. You can't come in with your kids and your parents and your sisters and brothers. It's only the one person whose name is on the ticket. Now, we will have, what we will have to address is any translation needs. But those are things that we are going to do as we're scheduling them so we'll know who's sitting in the parking lot.
Right. And we know ahead of time because we have to schedule.
Right.
But yeah, and we told people if they can bring how many people they want, but they just can't come into the building.
Okay. Is that clear, Ms. Dean?
She said yeah.
Okay. Ms. Tran, any questions?
No questions. I can hear because of the microphone right now.
Okay, which is okay. All right. So a couple of things. We have court out of backlog. All right, we are moving forward. We obviously can't do a thing until mid-May based on Supreme Court decision. So we start in June. Obviously, our costs are going to be a little higher because we'll have more sessions, which is okay. From a financial software or financial aspect of the central, when, obviously, when you reduce your, your financial forfeiture by 25% and we average $150,000 a month in collections, you know, we're going to lose roughly 30 times three. We're going to lose a hundred grand, give or take.
Right.
Somewhere in that range. So it does have some financial impacts. And then it also has just the fact there's nobody out there driving, which is great, you know, if you want it to be safe. But there's no commerce happening either. So, you know, everything has a counter side to it. And you agree with that?
Yes. And I would like to say this, since we haven't been having court, the judge and the bailiffs and the solicitors haven't been getting paid. So it'll be an impact, but not as large of one thing. They are all, they all will be paid when they're here.
All right, so that's not too bad.
It's not so possible that your insurance has a provision in it. I know that one, we had with GMA for hurricanes, we had a provision in it for economic losses for revenues or whatever. I would just throw a letter together, throw a spreadsheet together and submit it and get a quick $100,000 or so. Just to show some of these losses from the insurance company, so. That's something we can check into. I know it could have gone up to $500,000, but we didn't pay that much for the insurance, so.
And any time
$1,000 more.
We pay insurance, so our insurance policy on an annual basis is pretty hefty. So if you ever get to take advantage of something, if that opportunity is available. Thank you, Ms. West.
You're welcome.
Well, then, do you want to hear about the arbitration lawsuit?
I do, I do. Go ahead.
Well, we had our first one on the 23rd and I think it went well. And both parties, we had the tenant and the renter there. They both agreed that the problem was cease. And we made it clear to the owner of the residence that she was responsible for her tenants. And if they did not follow the rules, that she could also be cited.
So I want to make sure that the council members on the phone realize that we're talking about, we had our first arbitration session. I'm not sure if anybody said that except for me from a distance. So again, as Essie is explaining, we had both the homeowner and the tenant of the home here with the arbitrator that you all met and approved. And Essie, that was it, right?
Right.
And so moving forward, we'll be using that tool as often as we need. But I think Essie and I both agree, it will only be one case in the room at a time. You will not be inviting other spectators to enjoy, if you will, because we don't want the whole, well, they did this for this and they did this for this. So it'll be unlike the court sessions now, which everybody comes in at once. It'll only be one, you know, case at a time. Now, we don't expect a lot of cases on any given day anyway because remember, typically, we only have about nine citations per month for code enforcement. So.
An argument is getting appointed and that would be wrong. But it's, you know, it's in fairness to all parties, but the city itself as well as the resident, they get a much better discussion, you know, on an individual basis. They're not having to come to court, plead guilty, not guilty, with an explanation coming back later. And anybody who's been in that process, you know, you don't have an attorney that's representing you, which I would rather. So this process is more like Judge Judy, you know, you get to talk and you get to talk and then you both have a fair chance. However, if you're destroying the city, you know, we still have the option to take you to court. And, you know, we can use the other process if necessary, but just being a little bit more fair. But good job.
Yes. And I think it's going to work because people aren't coming to court. And they feel the way the arbitrator explains everything to them and it takes time that they get a say in it. But they also understand, and we even passed out the ordinances, you know, at the first one. So they would understand and they were about where they could go and look at all the different ordinances. I think it will.
Have you had a chance to think about the probation process?
Well, I'm checking because there are some things that are mandated by state law that they have to be on probation. I'm waiting for that.
And most of that was related to, just the last part of this discussion was, let's say, a citizen in Maro drives through a stop sign, you know, can't pay the $250 or whatever it is, then we put him on probation. And they have to show up and they have to pay a probation fee. It doesn't mean that you're a bad person. It just means that you're broke, you know. So maybe we should treat you a little differently than a guy who's out there soaking weed in the back of the car. You know, and the idea would be, you know, is there a way to do that responsibly and fair? Because the city's not making money on that probation. That's a probation company, private probation company. So we don't necessarily need to see you every week, you know, you're not taking a drug test or anything like that. So this would be where, just looking at the system, saying what's reasonable first, what's state law, we got to do whatever they say. You know, but on those other ones, maybe there's something else that we could do that's a little more responsible, if possible. So the first thing you do is you throw it out there and say what's fair. Then let's figure out what fair is and see if we can implement it. And, you know, good job, Mrs. Smith. Okay. So that's where you end with that. All right. Let's pick back up on, so we had a chance to have some discussion on a sales tax. We realized those numbers are something like the other budget. Let's pick up with item three and four. And this is really just for your heads up, is we wanted to keep as much money in your pocket as we possibly could for both our residents as well as our businesses. So we deferred your 2019, 2020 business license, which would have been due April 15, it would have been late after April 15, or April 1, whatever the date was, to June 1. A deferral does not necessarily mean that you're not supposed to money that. You know, we're trying to keep a little more money in your pocket when things are a little tricky. But that's one of those where, you know, it still does come to you on June 1. And all I'd recommend for our businesses is, you know, I realize some of those fees are relatively small and some of those fees are pretty staggering. In the event that you feel you have an issue that's going to create problems, I encourage you to come in and talk to the city manager. I encourage you to come in and talk to the finance officer. Maybe we can set you up on a payment plan. I'm sure we can come up with something that's reasonable if somebody has a significant value. If you're talking ONS for 500 hours, you may not. But if you talk about a business license for a hundred grand, you know, let's see what we can do to work things out. It's a tough economy out there, lots of things going on. But, you know, that's going to be it. On the other side, we also deferred the quarterly bill for residential sanitation. Well, when you defer that one, that's not an annual bill, that's a quarterly bill. So we want you to remember that you're going to get your June bill for the next quarter, I believe, at the same time you're going to get your quarterly bill. Is that correct, Sylvia?
You're talking about residential?
Yes, residential sanitation.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, yes, in effect, yeah.
Right. So in essence, even though that allows you to put money in your pocket, we don't want you to be shocked when you get an invoice for basically $200.
But I think, you know, we sort of all agree that because we don't know, I think because one bill is going to evolve into the other, we would want to give some latitude as we roll into the end of the year, right? So, you know, just you're paying this one and now all of a sudden this one you can't pay. We would want to work with you in the same way we just talked about the business licenses. Come in and talk to us because, you know, we're just, we're just trying to get the payments made. We're not trying to rack up on anybody's late fees, right?
And in fairness, all the people out there, a reasonable number of people paid their sanitation bill.
Sure.
So it would just be those that have a little bit of an issue. And again, you know, it's a deferral, not, don't pay me. And we realize that that's going to be there. So, you know, those invoices are out. We're trying to be as reasonable as we can, as responsible as we can. But, you know, services rendered, services do, you know, still counts. Any questions in relation to those items?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Dean?
Now, when the June bill is gonna, what are we gonna not defer that? Or you're gonna have to pay the June bill without a deferral?
Well, that would be up to you. As a council, you know, we've got a couple of weeks or a month actually before the next one's due. We probably wouldn't be a bad idea to know how many people are paying, how many people are in arrears. So we kind of know what number we're talking about and come up with some strategy. We could go through a long process of thinking we're helping somebody, but if 95% of the people pay, you know, we could work out the 5%, which is the latitude. So why don't we do this? Why don't we ask better questions, get some better results? And at the next council meeting or work session, we'll bring it back up and I think we'll have a better ability to know what we're going to do. Does that work for you, Ms. Dean? Dorothy?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
That works.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
That works for me as well.
Okay, Ms. Tran?
The same.
Okay, all right. We've already got an update on the bank reconciliation. I believe they said that was all the way up through February, if that was correct in terms of that. We also know that, and this is a good question too, coming into financials. I know our overall numbers are looking good for business and strategy, but are they hotel and motel tax? You know, we're not seeing very many people out there. I've heard numbers as low as 25%. And I know those numbers are behind as well. So what would we anticipate after, we just don't have enough data?
No, not right now, I don't, I would say, yeah.
So this relates to two things. One is the amount that we're collecting per month. And then the second one comes down to the tax side. I honestly don't remember, and this is just going off some work session discussions with the city manager. We haven't done a tax audit on a hotel in a while.
Yeah, in fact, I didn't even know we had until you asked me that question.
But we know GMA has a service. The question is, are we better off doing it ourselves or are we better off? I realize right now the place is full.
Yeah.
Well, but Angel has some information about that service. Make sure you're talking.
They charge basically, I might as well say a thousand dollars per person they need to audit. Because they pay $500 to select the person, then they pay another five, you pay another $500 fee to go further naturally to audits. It would take them a thousand dollars.
So let's say we got seven hotels, six hotels.
That's not bad.
In the past, because we, you know, the idea of an audit is, it's a threat, right?
Right.
Be audited. We don't cheat because we know they're coming.
Right.
And when you go back many years, you know, these hotels aren't going away. You know, so from the standpoint of knowing that we have the potential to do it is the driving force. And years past, what we always do is we pick one. So let's say we had six hotels. We wouldn't necessarily tell you which one we're going to do this year.
Right, exactly.
But we give them, okay? And sometimes we could do that in-house and it wasn't as complicated. If we haven't done it many years, and I realize they're under a lot of pressure at this point, you know, but, you know, they need to also understand that if you lie to the IRS or you're not willing to pay attention, you can keep money in your pocket, but that's not their money. It's not like those folks were out there and earned that money. It's like the sales tax when you go buy, you know, buy your groceries. That was a tax collected on them. That's your money. Our money as a taxpayer or as a city, that's our money.
Right.
You're just simply processing it for it. So when you're So when you're keeping that, I don't know what the, the rule for that would be, but I, I'm sure there's a bad word against for that. And, and we just want to say that's not true, it's a tax. So when we audit that, it, it's not the same thing. It's not auditing your books, I'm, I'm basically saying, did you give us all of our money that we were entitled to receive? And that's the other thing. So on that one, I would just, let's just take the next council meeting. Um, is give us some advice.
Okay.
You know, we know the services out there, um, I don't know that we have to do all six at the same time. You can kind of run some trends as to what people were paying, you know, say the last year, this hotel hasn't been here for a while. You know, let's look at somebody who seems to do remarkably poorly made.
Right.
And, and see if he's happy.
Exactly.
Is that fair?
That's fair, because technically what they earned for the first five hundred dollars they only charged, they're, they're going to look and see, well, who, who should we go audit? I'm like, well, I can tell you that, suppose.
That's right.
Right, you know, so, sure, okay, so I'll, I'll give you some comments next time.
Okay, and that's just us doing oversight and counter.
Right, exactly.
Okay, um, then the, the last one was the, I'm sorry, Ms. Dean?
Can you repeat what was there, I, I couldn't hear her.
Where's your phone?
Um, what we're going to do is, um, at the, at the next council meeting, we'll, we'll ask the finance officer to maybe give us a suggestion. To be honest, I, I think she's got the, uh, I think she's got the authority to do the audit already in the past. It's just a matter of, of updating us as to what it is, because it's a potential loss of income from you on a sales tax issue, um, or hotel motel tax issue, but also auditing, which is just keeping them honest. So I, I think it's just more of a heads up. So we wouldn't need any action, Ms. Dean. It would just be, you know, just implementing a process that we haven't used in a while, and just making sure that it's there, an oversight bill.
Right, we could send a letter out or something to all of them, anyway, or something. It's like, make them audit you this year or something. Yeah, I've done that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Perfect, okay. Um, and then the, the next item was, uh, obviously, what, what we, um, I'm sorry, we, we had a certain amount of money that was outstanding in, in the end of the year on property taxes. And the city had made some decisions to be able to, to go after people and foreclosures. Uh, that, that we changed our mind on that, obviously. But we have paid the attorney, I believe, is that right?
That's right.
So now we just simply have outstanding balances due. And these might be everything from a business license revenue to a personal property tax to, to regular property tax. And this is where we're asking the questions as to where are, um, there's a certain amount of money outstanding. That number could be several hundred thousand dollars at a time period where we could use it. Again, this isn't related to the virus, this isn't related to having a bad day. This, this is basically, you know, a regular tax that is owed. And, and instead of foreclosing on your house, we're going to ask you really nicely to come up and work with the city. Try and, again, be a little more reasonable, um, and, and come up with a method that works. Again, it, it's real tax, it's the first priority. We're ahead of your bank, we're ahead of everybody. And in the event that the house got sold, uh, the city would get paid as well, as long as we filed, you know, the appropriate, uh, forms. So this is really more of a colle- a, a collection update, but then just a discussion. And I'm sure you have not had a great deal of time in, in a short time period that you've been here, but, um, because it's such a large amount of money.
Yeah, I, I won- I wonder why you still had taxes out there that's owed from two thousand and six or whatever, you hadn't written them off, so you're just giving them opportunity to pay everything, right? I was looking.
Well, we have a little more of a draconian answer, but you should say not everybody in the council agreed with. So we, we changed that part, that part's done. The outstanding balance is done.
We can't hear Ms. Hudson's comment, I didn't hear Ms. Hudson's comment.
On this one, it's, it's just basically trying to give an update on the outstanding balance and, it's still early, she's not, she's not been here, you know, terribly long. Would you answer the questions?
Right, right, I was hoping, I had looked at the taxes, some of the, some of the, and I was, I was noticing how far back some of the money that was owed for it. Some of them, they went back to two thousand and six. Because I think at the, as of June thirtieth of last year, the, the total property taxes owed was like three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars or something like that. But, uh, I think Essie was sending me some spreadsheets, says week or something too, that some of that, people are paying some of those things, or, and then I can.
How much it pays is a unique deal.
I can tuck it out the top.
Tuck it out the top.
But, you know, on, but then on top of that, we're, she's also adding penalties and interest, so that the amount keeps going back up too, so. But, uh, during the next meeting, I should be able to provide you with that information, the information.
Okay, thank you, thank you for taking the time.
Everybody here with that?
Yes.
Okay, I heard Dorothy, Ms. Dean, or Ms. Knight, you good?
Yeah, I just thank her for providing that update.
Okay, sweet, um, and Ms. Tran, you're good?
Good.
All right, Ms. Tran. All right, so that's, that's basically a rough grasp as to where we stand coming into the end of this fiscal year. Obviously, hiring for these, you know, negotiations and different things like that is working for us. But let's, let's see how it goes, and that's, obviously the bigger problem is going to be the, the budget for next year. And, and we're headed in the right direction for that. Going into the next one, uh, it's, it's, it's twofold really, it's conference center operations. And, and, and part of this is, is uh, we got to come up with an answer and a process, maybe more than one. All right, so when you look at the, the funded equity report that she just handed us at the beginning of the meeting, I realize the number, you don't have that. You know, we're, we're, we're basically saying our conference center is going to lose a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars this year. Because that's your projection, right?
Yeah, that's what we are now, yes.
But, but you have to know, that doesn't even remotely make me happy, okay? You know, it's one thing to, to lose money, but, you know, losing a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars is, is just absolutely unacceptable. In, in, in fairness, I'm not even saying it's earned, but I'm just going to say, you know, what I'd like to do is, is take it apart two ways. One is know the plan, um, and I don't know that that's out yet, is that, is that correct, Sylvia? Do I, just my own person said it.
Yeah, I want to, I would want to hear from you, of course, before.
Okay, so, so one of the things I asked for was a marketing plan. Something that kind of says, here's where we are, and here's what we're going to do about it, right? Because just standing still is not acceptable. I, I had a, a draft that was sent to me this morning, actually yesterday. And I had a chance to look at it, I realize the number, you do not have it yet. It's reasonable, my personal opinion, you guys might totally disagree, okay? But it's, it's reasonable, okay? From the marketing standpoint, all right? What I'd like to do is to bring in Warren, which I believe is the gentleman that, that runs that, and have him come out to the next council meeting. And let, let's talk to him in person. You know, I, I see your marketing plan, and I, I've got to be convinced that you're the person that's going to pull this off. I, I'm not saying it's a job interview, but I'm, I'm saying, you lose a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, the city council gets to ask you some tough questions. You earned that, it, it may not be your fault, that's fine, then explain it. But I, I think it's fair to ask for an explanation. You'll have a copy of the, uh, the marketing plan shortly, it, it is reasonable. And there is an expense to that marketing plan, that, that's something that I'm confident you would have to say. You can't expect me to produce miracles if, if I can't dig myself out of the hole. I, I think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Reddick, the, uh, the conference center and the marketing of that conference center fits in, uh, the, the criteria of what hotel, you know, funds are. So when you look at what we traditionally collect on, on a, on an annual basis, what he's requesting is, and don't hold me to this, what was our covering grant, what we've been collecting in the past?
From Hotel Motel?
I understand.
Well, it was like four hundred, no, it was about four hundred thousand.
Not, not, not to the bank, how much was the, what was the actual collection?
Hotel Motel?
Yeah.
For the first, for this year?
More than two hundred thousand, I mean, it may not be for this year, but annually, you know, it, it's at closer to a million, the four hundred thousand I'm talking about is what's available to the DMO.
Okay, well, yes, yes, all they care about is what's available from a, from a marketing perspective, now it's going back to the city purchase, so is the covering grant? Fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
All right, so, but we're concerned, let's assume that, you know, we're going to lose our share a little bit. So the numbers that he's asking for only represent about twenty-five percent of that. So you're going, you know, nobody coached you and said, you know, come up with something, you know, cost effective or whatever. The idea was, what's your marketing plan? You know, and he submitted it. I haven't talked to him about it, matter of fact, I don't know that he knows we're talking about it, I know he knows we got it.
He knows.
But what I'm saying is, that's your point. You have to look at it as, as members of the council to decide whether it's reasonable or not. But I think the money's there to implement that plan. And then we have to figure out, just like anyone else, is if you're saying you, you lost some money, okay, let's, let's get through that. And we're going to get, and this is your, your decision. Your decision would be, let's assume that we kind of go for a second round. I, I obviously don't think I would let you go for a year before I check back with you. I think we're going to sit there and say, here's your marketing plan, then what's your last step? And what's my expectation? You know, and, and do not confuse marketing with the operations. There's going to be an operations budget, I understand that. But from a, from a just completely marketing perspective, you have to look at it, if it was your business, is it reasonable? You know, and then is this the guy that, um, that we're going to go with? And I don't have any reason to believe yes or no at this particular point, I'm just saying the marketing plan looked pretty good.
I see, I see.
Okay, so you now have the marketing plan actually in, in your possession, or it should have just come out. So, but the annual losses is pretty high, and, and makes your budget is going to be awful. You know, so before we start telling somebody they might not have a job, I, I don't want to have a situation where I lose a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in, in an enterprise firm. Just don't find that to be a reasonable expectation. That's, any, uh, obviously open for discussion, we can start anywhere. Ms. Knight, any discussion?
Um, I'll take the opportunity to review the marketing plans so that we can speak specifically to what was provided to us. I know you just mentioned not confusing the operations and the marketing strategy, but just to provide a little bit of additional context for the new council members. There is some information regarding, um, a tran- the transitional period where we came out of one DMO, uh, and we use the consultants to kind of bring things up to speed and, and back in play. There is some, uh, information and reports regarding some of the items that that consulting firm did see would need to be addressed. But that's just to provide additional context and understanding of the overall Marrow Center. But I, I, I will take the opportunity to read the information and the marketing strategy so that we can have a more evolved conversation amongst the five of us.
And I think what you were talking about there is referencing, um, the, the condition of the property, and maybe some things that were required or requested, whether it's
Well, and, and.
Necessary or not, we mentioned the same.
It was condition and sort of best practices in terms of the right time.
I always appreciate your, uh, your summary of value. But again, it's always nice to have additional contextual information so that Councilman Tran and Councilman Vaughn can, you know, kind of add some additional depth and breadth to their understanding of the Marrow Center.
No problem, and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll ask the city manager to make sure that information is sent to every part. And then I don't believe they have a budget yet, so it's, it's hard to comment on the budget that's in, uh, that you seem to lose.
Yeah, I think I have a meeting with him tomorrow with somebody named Warren.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I told him, ask him about.
I told him, ask him about the budget too.
So, so we'll have a, we'll have something to look at by the next council meeting, I would imagine. And then, Ms. Dean, any questions?
Uh, that information I would also like to, um, review. And also I would just like to say that, um, you know, having, um, experienced some of the situations with the Marrow Center and, uh, planning events and things like that, what it is going to take to make that profitable, if it's possible. Um, and especially going forward with the, the, the conditions, economic conditions that we're going to be facing. I think that it is an asset for the city, I believe that it is an asset, because there are other cities that have a facility like that. And, um, I would like to see that it work. If we can make it work, then, then that'll be great.
We'll make it work, Ms. Dean, I promise.
If we can make it work.
We'll make it work, we, we just need to, you know.
I'm, I'm, I'm from the old school, I'm not from Missouri, but you do have to show me.
Uh, that's all right, I, I just want to have somebody match up a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, but I agree. Ms. Tran?
Yes, we just have the, as, the marketing strategy and, uh, most of us have not had a chance to look at. Uh, so at, in the next meeting, I think we have enough time to have a look at that, of course, and then prepare for the, uh, real discussion.
Senator. And then, let's just, um, ask Mr. Warren today, I would ask some questions. All right. Next item relates more to the common area maintenance, uh, that's related to the actual satellite property. Uh, we call it the conference center, but it's a bigger space than that. Do, do we have an update for that on people?
I mean, I've asked her for an update, I guess it was last Thursday, and she just, you know, there's not too many opinions yet. They're still reviewing the documents for that and the, and the bond. In fact, we had a question about the bond document, what was it? Angela, remember to speak into your phone so the council can hear you. The, um, the bond document, the bond attorney asked for a document?
Oh, yes, yes.
Bond attorney contacted us to, because they just needed a copy of it, so that they could review it, um, in order to look at the, like you said, the, the terms of it and see if there's a possible way to, um, to pay, pay it off or something like that. And so I sent them that information and stuff like that, and haven't really heard back from them since then.
And, and those are two items there, one is the, the, the common area maintenance, we were paying nine thousand dollars a month for basically the exterior party line.
From product development.
From product development, but, but, but for the most part, the idea is to figure out if there's a way to, to do something about that. Then the next one is related to the bond refinancing, which, which basically means we've got a huge bond out there, you know, that's got an interest rate that, you know, is higher than what it was when it was originally set.
Yeah.
You know, so there's lots of questions related to that. The, the, the end result question is, is what do you have? And you just say, at a five percent interest rate, you know, we know that we have taxable bonds and, and non-taxable.
Yeah.
There, there's, there's lots of questions related to that. If I had to just start, the first one is obviously want to refinance.
Right.
Okay, then I think I should be able to do a, a tax exempt bond.
You may not be able to, something changed, um, I was going to say, something changed, um, I think with the federal administration office a couple weeks, years ago. And that when you, even if you had a tax exempt bond, if you refine, you were to refinance it, it's going to be attacked with taxable bonds.
True, you can do a tax exempt bond.
Yeah, if you refinance, I don't, it's, there's some, I don't know specific, the specific, um, law, law or, or regulation or something like that, but yeah. Because we just issued bonds about a year ago.
We have different boards.
Okay.
Okay, two different entities, all right, so let's say entity A owns it. We have oversight over it. What if we buy it back?
You could do that.
Then I'm basically, because I'm, I'm covering the E, what?
Right, right.
So if this arm is traditionally separate, we know it involves, and we give the A, it is, right? We actually super sort that to the court. You know, so over here, I just buy it back, and there, there's lots of questions as to what's included in that. In the original bond, we had the conference center, and we had a, technically a business entity on one oh oh five Mountain Road.
Okay.
Whole different discussion, I'll get into a little later, not tonight, but some other time. But just to stay on path, then that's, that's now settled theoretically, I mean, actually it is settled, okay? All right, so.
Are you picking up, up the exhibit?
Yes, ma'am, I am. All right. But like I said, I will leave that alone for just a minute, because it would just get complicated, there's no reason to do that. But on a, on a tax exempt bond, this is where there's some, some missing ingredients. Okay, first, we, we have a two thousand seven, uh, ten-year bond that we refinanced in two thousand fifteen. Okay, so two years are, we have a three point seven five percent interest rate, and we refinanced for five percent, and we lose our share. Then we have a portion of that was taxable and tax exempt, and it all of a sudden became taxable.
Yeah.
And you're going, okay, but that was a whole new bond. So that gets interesting. If you look at the early payment schedule, we also did an interest only payment on the new bonds for two years. What was the logic behind that? But that's true, it's in the bond, right?
Yeah.
All right, and additionally to that, one is, that's really interesting is, the, the original. the, the original bond from two thousand seven, we paid for eight years. If you read the bond documents, the amount owed, even if you paid off early and followed the amortization scheduling, it says that I would owe six point one million dollars at that particular point. The bonds are for nine point one million dollars. There is a gap in there of about two and a half million dollars. So the question goes, where did it go? That has not been explained to us yet.
Yeah.
Lots of missing ingredients in there. If you're asking me what I think took place, at least on the half a million, I believe a half a million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was negotiated on that can feed process to be paid on the agreement. The, the agreement was executed, that's my understanding, is that correct, City Manager? Okay. But we don't have a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar check coming out of the city of Marla. But if you did it at closing, it never would have been a city of Marla check. That makes logical sense. The, the, the additional two million dollars, where did that go?
And to your question a moment ago, if you remember during the, the negotiation, it was identified, but I, I, I don't know that I can confirm that anything was executed. It was in the land.
And, and it may not be, but it's one of those where it looked like it was a completed action. So, so somewhere in there, I, when I do just basic math in my head, if we're off by a thousand dollars here or there, that's bad, but we're fine. When, when you can't tell me what we just bought for an additional two point five million dollars and we don't seem to have a piece of property to go with it, I really want to know.
And, and it didn't go out to like a printing machine and all that concept that came, comes off the top before you even see your money? Or anything?
Those, the, the bond documents are, are complete on their own, but you don't see, we know, we know, we know it got sent, right? So we know those things exist. Yeah, then the question is, is, I'd love to see them. There's lots of questions in there and, and in fairness to the other two members of the council that aren't new, this happened before them. So this would be one full administration before anybody that's currently sitting here in terms of refinance. All right, now, funds showed up somewhere, let's figure out where they are. So that, that's a critical piece, right? So then what I would look at, if I had to redo this to get the best numbers that I could, you know, the city just paid two million dollars for Reynolds Road. So if I had to back it up with, with, uh, property, if you will, then I would say the conference center property and the Reynolds Road property should more than cover a ten million dollar number. And then you would do a tax exempt financing to cover that. And that should be more than enough and, and a, um, a year, of course, current situation not being included, but, but a year ago, the old JCPenney space was listed on the tax digest, the, the fair market value from the tax assets was ten million. So I don't think we're too far off in terms of coming up. Worst case scenario, it's worth five. But we also have the conference center in the middle of ours and that was worth about five million dollars. So more than enough ways, I think, to collateralize it if somebody had to have it.
Okay.
The, the other thing that's interesting on that was when we originally set it up in two thousand seven, you had a revenue bond. When you read those documents, they're implying, quite interestingly enough, that I have a, a G O bond. I can't do a full faith and credit of the city, which it says in the documents. It says I'm backing this up with a full faith and credit of the city versus giving it a revenue source, which might be, uh, we allocate three mils, a hotel or not a hotel, but we operate three mils of the city of Marla's tax digest for collections for that purpose, that's a revenue bond.
Right.
But we have something else that basically says in our current documents that we're backing it up with a full faith and credit of the city. And the other way you can do that is by a fund.
Right.
And we know that didn't take less, which means the bond documents themselves have gaps in them. We also know that the operating agreement, uh, uh, the terminology is not correct, but the agreement between the city of Marla and the development authority says that we can refinance and supposedly they're gonna hold it to this, but my understanding is with, um, when Chris looked at it, he said that the document between the bank and the development authority says it should do nothing. So you have conflicts. My understanding of contract law is that there's conflicts and everybody's looking out for us and it's the taxpayer we're looking out for, that we would prevent.
Okay.
So it's, it's not as simple as I'm just staring at it, there's lots of documents of it. So we need to know what happened, if that's all possible. Why it happened? You know, obviously the biggest thing is to be able to get ourselves out of, is to say, if we refinance at even three percent, which we know right now you can just buy the house for it. So if the government was nervous about it, not one. Yeah, we ought to be able to get at least a three. I like to think we can get two and a half. And that would put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in our pocket, just basically on savings on interest alone.
That's, that's every month?
Every year.
Every year, two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty, yeah. That's huge. When you, when you're talking about, let's say we have a budget shortfall of a half a million. Trust me, these guys can't make up a half a million. Yeah, so when you look at things like health insurance, when you could look at things like a can feed at a thousand dollars a month, when you could come up with, you know, a, a twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar a month savings on interest rate, nobody got hurt in that budget.
Right.
That's just trying to use it and figure out what's to pay. And then we have responsibility to be able to pay that thing off. So it's one thing to say you still owe ten million dollars, but on paper, we should have only been owing about six point one million for the projects that have always been thrown in our face.
Right.
We'd like to know what else we bought that nobody seems to remember. Um, and then of course, we want to allocate the funds because, you know, too many dollars is theoretically disappearing. It's not a good idea.
Yeah.
Now, we don't think anybody's got it. Nobody's said that one way or the other, but I'm just saying, you know, obviously something happened.
Right.
You know, so let's figure out what it is. And then we'll get there. And then at some point, when you have a spare minute, we will wait to act, but pay attention to one oh five Mount Town.
Pay attention to what?
The, the property that was sold to the development authority.
Oh, okay.
All I'll say is, is when you read it, you, you'll want to read it a second time.
Okay.
Cause the first time isn't gonna make a whiff of sense. The second time you'll go, I'm gonna need to read that Russell. It's not a lot. And because I can't define that one either, um, there's, there's, and, and basically when it went so, the, the city basically has to approve the sale. It did not. The property's still sold. You know, so there's a question as to whether I still have, um, if I still have a claim to type it?
Probably did.
I'm fairly certain to do, but the problem would be, we don't wanna necessarily, you know, the development authorities, a friendly development authority is out, right? We don't wanna necessarily, you know, go up against the development authority's insurance company. You only have the insurance company go back against the development authority for statements that were made in the clause. So we can be very, very wrong and, and basically just hurting ourselves. So outside of just playing politics with it, which is not my interest in. You know, the idea is what's, you know, let's make sure what happened is credible.
Okay.
Um, there, there, you know, there's lots of reasons to sit there and go, that doesn't, how can you do that?
Right.
And if that's the easy one and it's still happening, then I wanna find out. Um, and that's the idea that we laid out there, so this is what happened. We don't have to like it. You know, we just have to sit there and make sure that we can be accountable for it from a financial standpoint. This is what happened, like it or not. And, and we, we have too many unanswered questions related to that. Any questions related to those two items, that's six and seven?
Do you have something?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to ask something in the two items we were discussing.
Yes, Ms. Tran?
The bond, uh, could we get the, a copy, could we have a look? Everyone, could we have a copy of the settlement of the closing when we refinanced the bond sent to all of us so we can have a look and see what there is?
Yeah, we, I don't know if they do settlements taken on bonds, I know they do them on properties. Um, but there should have been some allocation of where those funds were meant.
Right.
And then from there, we, we can be accountable somehow. So, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, that's all what I have.
Okay, uh, Ms. Dean?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Knight?
No questions at this time.
Just call you? Okay. Then the next one gets into, let me, excuse me, trying to do a couple of things. But the, the stake number eleven, do we have anything from, um, the, uh, the vegetation in terms of what's happening on that second file?
No, yeah, I do see that Mike Linton called me today, I just haven't had a chance to call him back.
Okay, so we don't have an update for, for, for ten, um, on, on health insurance? Did you saw what we were talking about the last time, being able to break that down into something that makes sense?
So, just so I'm clear, and, and, you know, first of all, Sean, uh, Mitchell is speaking. Sean with Marshawn McClellan, McClellan is the person who will, has built our spreadsheets. So any combination of information that we need to get, he can certainly do. He also wants to make sure you all know that if you all want to talk to him in some sort of Zoom meeting without a forum, he's available to any or all of you. Uh, but you're saying that the spreadsheet, cause I felt like when you sent me the information, the spreadsheet hasn't. You're just saying you want it individual?
Well, I feel like, like I said, just the word, you would, you would basically be able to say, you know, here's my cost. Here's what it's gonna cost for single family coverage, here's what it's gonna cost for, um, single coverage, family coverage. Here's what my co-pay is, right? Here's my maximum deductible. But those are normal sheets that they lay out for health insurance, right? Besides that, and then you have, you know, cause in, in the one we had, it mixed it, right? You had, here's what my health was, then below it, we had dental, we had different names across different clinics. And then you go, okay, you know, that's.
But you have a summary, but then you have the, the spreadsheets that build out.
But if you can just say dental, for example, and, and here's, here's my health, here's my plan for this guy, here's my plan for this guy, here's my plan for this guy. Make a decision on dental by itself, cause it's, it's separate, right? Same thing with life insurance. Yeah, and then come back to the top one, which was related to the health insurance. But, uh, the, the spreadsheet, if you will, had data in it, but, but that's not normally how it's presented. Not, not from, from a health department or a health.
Well, I'll have you on.
And they do it all the time. Another thing, you gotta do a lot of work, right? You know, but, but the standard one probably would have done. Cause we don't have any idea what our co-pays were, our co-pays, our out-of-pocket expenses would, would have been for the employee. We just saw savings offered us, which is.
No, 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 that, that's what I'm saying is, I, I'm curious as to, you're, you're looking at the same thing I'm looking at, which is broken out to how much it costs, how much the employee pays of that. So how much, how, uh, uh, if the cost to an employee is four hundred dollars, they pay fifty dollars, we pay three fifty. That, so I.
Well, that's your premium, right? But, but your co-pay's completely different. And you might have a twenty dollar co-pay if you went in that work, you might have a fifty dollar co-pay.
Yeah, and that, that, so I'll, I'll make sure Angela sees it, cause I think the information is in there, unless I see it wrong.
And I, 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 two voices out, that's why I'm. But because that's such a heavy budget, I didn't, I just wanna make sure we're not taking ourselves money, costing somebody else money. Cause it's, it's now time, it's gonna be in that lineup, and it's gonna be.
Yeah, but just remember that the anthem, that the, and the anthem, uh, proposal does not change anything for the employee. They don't pay more and they don't, they don't pay less. Um, so that, that, I can say that, but we'll make sure you're getting the information you need to look at.
Okay. Cause you'll be explaining it in a lineup and there's no sense not having it if you can do it. And that's on all three, right? So that's on health insurance, the dental, and the life. And, and any questions related to item nine on health insurance? I know we had brief discussions about that last, um, councilmate, uh, Councilman Tran, Councilman Tran?
At this time?
Um, Ms. Knight?
No, at this time.
Um, Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Cool.
No.
No questions. Um, we've already talked about the budget schedule. I'm gonna come back to that, let's, let's pick up sanitation on number ten. We got a couple of proposals. Um, the, the proposal that offers us the most cost-effective, uh, number so far is, I believe, GoPro at nineteen dollars.
Waste Pro.
Waste Pro at, uh, nineteen, GoPro's the champion.
Yeah, cause like when you said it, I was like, what?
Waste Pro at nineteen dollars. There, there was some additional questions there and it was, um, you know, if we do the once-a-week service, um, we, we obviously had some discussions with a couple of citizens who, who so far matched our idea, which is to say, if we have that and I want to, let's just say Christmas and they're dumping all kinds of extra stuff out there, can I pick up the phone and order like an all-or-part extra pickup? That would be a question. And then what would that cost? Negotiate that in our contract. So if I need a, an extra pickup, cause, you know, ten people came to my house over the weekend and I want this stuff to sit out for that long, what would I pay for that?
Yeah, so as I understand it, it would technically be, you're not calling as it's needed as much as if I want two pickups at my house instead of one a week, I have basically a second account on my address that would be an additional number of dollars.
Two, 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 well, actually it's three questions. All right, so one would be, Lou, just, just like in a commercial business, you know, I filled it up. I filled up the promise, I didn't come good, and they give you that one, that one time deal. Then there's the, there's an all-or-part. The, the next one would be, I just use so much garbage, you know, and the city went out and got a contract for ninety-five percent of the citizens, but you, you know, you left the hang. And you want to say, no, I didn't. You can get twice the week service, what's it gonna cost? And they would pay that additional charge. Does that make sense? It's, it would be a little bit, I don't know what I would think. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's probably gonna be, I mean, we, we got houses in the city that are six thousand square feet, you know, and with multi-generational families living in it, it is possible, you know, that somebody might eat that service. I want them to have a negotiated agreement, so the garbage can, they're gonna charge it fifty bucks or something crazy. I wanna say, look, that's, that's gonna be. Um, and then the last one we had as a discussion was, you know, if, if we, we realize that the garbage can will be the residence garbage can. But if somebody wanted to buy a garbage can, a good quality one, what would it cost? What was their recommendation as to, to do that?
So, um, having talked to the vendors, it, nobody sells their garbage cans. In some situations, they will rent them, so.
I'm not asking for that. What I'm saying is they buy them and we know they're durable. You know, versus us just running down to Home Depot and buying something that says, you know, Husky, we know is gonna fall apart. You know, can they give us some advice as to where they buy a, a pretty solid?
So you're not asking for a, a cart with their logo on it? You're, okay, you're.
I want the citizens to be able to buy one for themselves, because we know they're.
Not using the sanitation person as a garbage.
If, if they wanna leave their own garbage cans out there, great, you know, but if, you know, could you know, Home Depot themselves stuff is, you know, A, maybe Giant, Vichy, you know, and, and you just sit there and you go, enough. But if we can find one that's durable and just say, this is the one we recommend. Doesn't have to have a brand to it, they, they buy them. And they buy them in bulk.
I will say, I did buy my trash can at Home Depot and, you know, I mean, I bought the top end of the line and, and it, it seems comparable to the advanced cart that's out there. A different color.
Maybe they get value.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, sure. So then would we, would we be also asking, is there a way for the citizen to buy it at their cost?
That would be correct. And then the difference would be, is where we would say, if we know those things come and send out the cash, so let's say we, we, as citizens, we get together and say, anybody who wants to order one of these carts, you know, that you have a place to order, you gotta buy it. And then we'll have them all sent up one time, so we buy them in bulk, right? So maybe fifty citizens decided to buy a garbage can, then we give them. Versus everybody, you know, doing whatever.
Theoretically, it would be the, the maker of the garbage can, oh, I'm sorry, the stand, I put it here. The maker of the garbage can would get it to us, not do the sanitation.
That's correct. Cause the, the sanitation company's not producing them, we know that, they just order.
Right, okay, yeah.
But they, it's not pretty durable because they, they read them off. That's why I like this, cause they're not gonna put up with anything that doesn't hold up, right?
All right, okay.
Any additional questions related to sanitation?
And I'll get those answers before the next meeting.
Of course, I have two questions.
Ms. Dean, go ahead.
Yes, um, I'll, to that, uh, regarding the, uh, the, uh, trash receptacle, isn't it, is that they come and take the trash out of their receptacle, not taking the receptacle to the street?
Yes, only they roll the container up to your receptacle and then take your stuff out for a minute.
Right. So with that being said, I, I think that, you know, if, if there's a heavy duty, I have a, you know, another trash can. But if they do that, they're not really handling the trash can, so.
They're, they're not, but if you do, if you do once-a-week service and, and somebody's got a decent sized can, I just wanna make it so that there's an option if they need. You can sort of use what you want, Ms. Dorrit.
Right. Yeah, my other, other concern is that, that all-or-part option, if they have, uh, more than one pickup, what is the second, I mean, what are, what are the options? Is it just for your household trash or is it a pickup for anything?
Good question.
That you, uh, are offering.
Just remember that we had considered the elimination of recycling in bulk. So the only thing that's left is yard waste and garbage. So I really feel that I've, I've sensed from the council, so I certainly. So I really feel that I've, I've sensed from the council, so I certainly, if we need to change that, that we're all in agreement about getting rid of both recycling and bulk.
Well, bulk goes over the curve.
Right, that's what I'm saying. In the contractual iteration.
They're not recycling.
So I just want to make sure to your point, Councilwoman Dean, the only thing you could get all-or-part service for through the contract would be garbage and yard waste.
Not to just put stuff out on the street, just stuff, okay?
Yeah, well, the cell phone occurrence is going to be a public works call and that should go back to whatever day of the street you know we had it on.
Except yard waste. I mean, that goes on the curb too.
Okay.
You good? Ms. Dean, is that, is that all the last question here? Anymore?
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Trin?
No question at this time.
No question.
Okay, so we'll get some additional information on that. And these are all leading up to the budget. Without having these answers, we can't answer additional questions. So then it does come back to the 2021 budget. We already have the, the budget schedule. And then we talked earlier, Ms. Angela, about the departmental budgets, right, which we know are coming. And then a couple of things, obviously, salaries are going to be complicated. And salaries were complicated before. We had issues with the COVID acting. So we had a question early, which was, you know, let's look at some performance evaluation. What I'm saying is, we haven't done that. We will start.
Well, the, I want to make sure we're clear that the police and fire department will have some measure of evaluations because they just have a different, you know, sort of higher of the instruction. But just at large, we have, yes, we will begin them again.
Okay. So, so we'll have performance evaluations. We just might not have the ones that we need here. And there's the discussions on pay scales and individual salaries. You know, we know we got a chart, but to some degree, we want to look at this. There's some things that have changed, you know.
Pay classification scale.
Well, it's true, but if you go back a while, you had a sergeant, a lieutenant, a captain, a chief, or maybe a fire marshal. Now you have a battalion commander.
Battalion chief, deputy chief.
But if you don't follow how you change the dollar actually go with it, you may not change the dollar. Maybe we did change the dollar. So if we're looking at what's fair and we only have a certain amount of money, we want to make sure we're spending the money where it makes sense. And if you've already received that funds, in other words, you didn't get a raise, but we changed your pay, we changed your, your classification. And by changing classification, you did receive those funds, then, then technically, I'm not saying this without more empirical data, but you would have received somebody versus somebody who may still be a sergeant and hasn't received any money in a while. And then if you just got here, you know, you kind of knew what the city was paying when, when you took the job. So I don't know that, you know, that's quite as critical, even though, you know, you might be the one who has the hardest time to eat.
So that clarifies some things for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so there's, and any questions related to item eight?
Yes, can I, could I add something beside the job performance evaluation? I would like to see the staff responsibility. So, and I have a sample form here. I can forward to the city manager and to see if you want to use that form and you can use that. If you don't, I would like to say, for us to have a better understanding, we would like to see the duty and responsible for daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, annually, or annually. And along with qualitative.
Yeah, right. Mayor, can you send that to all of us? Just, just easy. I'll send it to the city manager. It's easy enough so we can all locate it at the same time. Might save us some time.
Yes, I will.
Perfect. Other questions? Are you good again? Is that the only thing?
That's what I answered, but I have.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Paul?
No questions.
Okay. I'm just going to pick up two more, maybe, I mean, because of the sidewalk project, we just talked about that. So there's really not an update on that one, right? Right now into number 14.
Okay, well, so we are. So we are, Mark Whitley is the one who designed that forest first. It ended up being a far more complicated project than we had anticipated through all sorts of drains and connections and water authority and phone company. But, so he is supposed to be getting to me by this Friday, the construction administration, because we can't go to bid and I had told him I need the construction administration expense before I go to bid and the call specimens for the project, not just the design. So once we get that, you know, we can move to, we can move forward to the RFB. But because technically that doesn't need your vote because remember, we can't choose a company without your vote anyway. So we don't have to wait until the next meeting. We're just going to, as soon as he gives you that, we'll take it to bid. And it will be out for bid at least 30 days, maybe 45 because everybody in this environment has slowed down so badly. And then we would look at how many recipients we get and then that's where you all will start to look at who is wanting to build it and then ultimately make a decision.
And why this is important, several of the things first is, is we need sidewalks, something carbon red. But remember, these are splotched projects, right? So there's nothing else that that money can be spent for except for these projects. So if we can get these projects out, first your citizen benefits, but additionally, we put additional people back to work. You know, about the time period where people are going to start thinking, you know, hey, by the time we get through the G I process or the bid process, whatever it is, it's not like this is going to happen tomorrow, but it might be four or five months from now. And four or five months from now, we can help, right? So any project that we can keep moving with funds that are not general funds, this is not something that you're taking somebody's raise away or something like that. These are things that have to be allocated toward these projects. We want those projects completed, you know, in a timely manner to do our part to be able to make it. So we can put as many people to work as we can. I would certainly appreciate it if we could get a local contractor.
So to that, what I was about to say is, one of the challenges that we continue to have is when we did these projects out, we had no respondents locally. And I don't just mean tomorrow. I mean, in Clayton County, often on the south side. We can get some design companies, but rarely do we see it in construction, smaller constructions. So I would, I would encourage us to, you know, if you, if we've got ideas on how to spread that word to a larger local audience, you know, I'm all ears. Let me know. Send me an email.
Okay. And really what she's saying here is, we know we have local contractors, but no local contractors. Somewhere or another, there's a disconnect. And maybe it's because the project cost is too high. You know, is it, is it possible we could break this apart? The sidewalk project, maybe not. That was a little bit interesting. Maybe, maybe some other ones, but you know, because it's out of the harbor and because we know we got all kinds of traffic issues there.
Well, there's a part of me that thinks, are there really no local companies? Is it, Mark, is it a get the word out disconnect? Because some, in olden days, it used to be our projects were too small. And, but now, to your point, that's a good question. Are they too large for the really small people? And could we look at ways to split them, you know, into pieces?
Well, this is where your, your experience down in Glen County, because they were interesting folks down there. But, you know, they did a lot with the local contractors. They really pushed that 10% number of different things. So even if I can't get the top contractor, maybe we could do something where they could earn some points if they did, a subcontract.
Right, right.
A subcontract, right? But I don't want to just pay somebody to hold up the room just so that somebody can say, you know, they met some DBE or something. I want to sit there and go, no, I really want to hire a local contractor who's qualified. I'm willing to, to, you know, open up the procedure to see if that works. We know they're here. I mean, we have the, basically the bedrock of the working glass, right, in our backyard. You know, so they may not own the company, but they're the ones who are digging and earning. That's a fact. You know, so why can't we see what happens?
And we do, we have, in the situations where we have had connections with some local companies, one of the big challenges is the people owning the equipment necessary. They may can operate it based on their breadth of experience, but they don't own it. And so if we were, say, some cities that own their own fleet of equipment, they have the opportunity to hire these local companies and they rent them or it's part of the contractual negotiation, but we don't have any of the equipment. So that, that's one of the disconnects. And we can't do it with the county's equipment unless we gave all the money in the project over to the county, so, which we're not.
Well, they're not going to do it locally either. Well, let's do what we can, you know, and, you know, I'd rather try and fail than basically just throw up our hands and say, well, it's too bad. You know, sidewalks have not been on Lake Harbin ever, you know, at least on that side. So, you know, if we take this project a little bit slower and try to put money back in the pockets of our local community, you know, then let's, let's beat the door down and see what we can do.
Well, and an interesting thing I would like to say too is, when we talk about local, you will often, I mean, I can't tell you how many times it's happened where we'll talk about local, oh, I know somebody local, I, I know some people, and they send me these contact information and none of them are for Clayton County. So how are we defining local? Southern Crescent, Clayton County?
I don't know. I mean, I would look at it and say, you know, I love Mara.
Sure.
Yeah, and then Clayton County. And after that, I, you know, I'd be a little bit inclined to sit there and go, does it matter to me if, you know, first off, if we feed Henry County, Henry Carins are competitive. I'd probably rather feed Fulton County.
Yeah, and so interesting that you say that because that's going to be our primary interest is coming from Henry County, hands down.
We've sent them enough.
I agree, I agree.
So. Well, we'll come up with something. Well, let's, let's just open the door to say, you know, we're going to give it a palace try. I think that's only fair. Any questions? I'm sorry, I cut off for that a little bit. And any questions related to the sidewalks?
I have a comment, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
This has been a project for quite some years now and the citizens have constantly asked what's happening with the Lake Harbin, you know, sidewalks. So this is something that I think they deserve and they need because, you know, for walkability and, you know, safety, that's something that sidewalks, we should have sidewalks.
I agree with you. It's going to get built. That's not the question. We'll get that part done. We just want some local people to get the work if we can. Any other questions? Ms. Knight?
No, not at this time.
Ms. Trin?
No question.
Paul?
No question.
Okay. Quarterly newsletter should be on your doorstep. I believe we're trying to.
By the end of tomorrow.
By the end of tomorrow. So, you know, keep it up, updated. Remember, not everybody has the internet. Not everybody reads the webpages every day. So we're providing stuff in separate languages in a hard copy format. For the first time, we've also got some advertising for our local business community, kind of letting you know as, as things start to open back up, that they would appreciate their business. Just like everyone else, you know, we always complain that, you know, the type of businesses we want locally aren't here. Well, you know, if we don't spend some money locally, they'll never be here. And if we don't spend some money locally with what's in, in Clay, we'll even have less than what you have right now.
And I just would like to make a comment for everybody to hear. It's, it's really amazing how excited, when you call a local business, first of all, we've been calling them for weeks. They very much appreciate that. But when we had the opportunity to extend a free advertisement in our newsletter, I mean, it, it's really, could bring you to tears, their level of gratitude to the mayor and council, so.
Sweet. Love that. So I was going to, can you get an update on the changes on that East Street Commissioner? Traffic, we had a traffic engineer looking at that one, right?
Hold on. So, yeah, he, he sent me some drawings and I called him. In fact, we met last Wednesday at my office and I just, I needed to meet with him face to face because something wasn't translating. So he's gonna, he's, he should be updating those. I mean, it's been a long time coming, but, but, you know, in it, when people say, well, I'm just swamped because of the Corona, you know, I don't know what to say to that. But, but I expect some, in fact, Friday is also that deadline to get those updated drawings. So, you know, we can just look at exactly where the lines are going to be painted, what line. And it's mostly the lines that are already there that just need refreshing, that can't be set.
And a couple of little high ones.
Yeah, and, and a, a crosshatch of, you know, so if I'm at Boba Theory and the railroad tracks to my left, that brick paved, almost triangular separation, you know what I'm talking about? On the, he's actually proposing to crosshatch some white lines beyond that. So it perpetuates that, don't turn left here and don't go across.
Let's look at it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So you may not want those. You may think they're too, it makes it too busy, but we'll, we'll look at it when he gets it to us.
Okay. So, so I should, and what got you, residential street lighting? You know, we talked about the interchange, but where's the residential stuff?
So, you know, they, they changed out like 70 bulbs. And, you know, this is that reality where the mayor and council, we're just going to have to make a decision moving forward, is do we want to have an agreement with Georgia Power where they are monitoring our light shortages? Now, remember this, that's not going to be every week or every month. So, you know, because I've been talking to many people in Georgia Powers, I'm sure you have, and, you know, it's local law enforcement that keeps an eye on when they're driving around. You know, it's public works of having scheduled days every month, not this just sort of, it, it can't, it has to be definitive. On this day of every month, somebody is going to come in late and stay late because you can't do it until after dark, right? But, and this is going to be separate than the interchange, to your point. So it's really sort of up to us. It's up to us. If we don't have a Georgia Power under contract to monitor it, it's up to us to monitor which lights are out.
Well, we should monitor just simply because we have the people that are already driving the streets. But what's the, what's the progress of the amount of lights that were already out?
Well, so we know that they, because when Mitch and Lynn and I did the inventories, there were 30 that were illuminated that had been out. And then they, Georgia Power, because they're not, again, they're not, they're not obligated to do it. They came out and drove our major corridors and from that, an additional 70 bulbs.
Right, so where about like the green lights on the back of walls?
So the green light, remember, that's going to be, y'all are going to have to decide if you want to upgrade those to LED. If we need to get back to that decision code.
What was the price per light out? Did they give it?
Yeah, no, they haven't given us that. So part of all the information, we're still waiting on proposals. The interstate was my priority for them. So now they can move on. Because if you remember, if for every green light post that's out, it's a three-month delay until it gets changed. If you want it to be quicker, then we're going to upgrade it. But to your point, we'll need to see a price per post on that because that's going to be.
Because one should be free.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, it's just, you know, three months later, they'll change the bulb and we'll resume paying the electric bill. That's free. But the other one is the upgrade. And of course, you know, that also could be from your product development money.
I think we just got to see what numbers are, see what's fair.
Yeah. And then a part, another part of the equation with Georgia Power is, Mayor, if you remember when we drove around early on, when you were elected, we looked at just how dark some of the spaces in the city were. And so one of the things that they're putting together, I mean, they gave us a first iteration, but it didn't have any cost value information. I was like, it's a, it was a diet, a light diet for the parks. In Georgia Power's professional lighting opinion, what lights need to be placed within our parks to keep them illuminated? And we need the cost on that. And we will, so I have the information of if we chose these different poles, this is the area it would light for every individual park, but there's no associated cost. So that's what I'm waiting on for that. Y'all may want to light every single park, but we need to know, at some point, it's cost prohibitive.
Everything's got to cost you. Point basically being on public works related projects, we're making progress.
Yes, yes, sir.
It's not everything, but we're moving. And I think the moving part is critical. And you'll see that in some of the newsletters as they're pointing out the different things that they're making progress on. Obviously, having a public works director would be critical, but, you know, that's a fact of the drawing board. And then the last item that we'll talk about tonight is number 12.
I'd like to interject at this point, I do need to interject at this point.
Go ahead.
Because I want to make sure that I'm clear and I didn't miss something. We started talking about the sidewalks on Lake Harbin.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it sounded like the conversation went to engaging the engineer regarding the intersection at Lake Harbin.
At East Street, that's correct. So I realize there's a difference of opinion as to how to solve that, but the idea was basically the striping that's not very. but the idea was basically the striping that's not very good, that's already existing, and some minor changes. We've talked about that before. We were just asking for an update on where the progress was. And that would be 15.
Right, I understand that's on the work session agenda, but, you know, the conversation moved so quickly.
I'm just, I know Dorothy's got me on a clock. I'm trying to finish.
You're already late. You're already late.
And then we did a brief update on 16, which was residential streetlights in general. And then number 12 is where I'm going to end. And that is, you know, there's a number of positions we'd obviously like to have. Economic development, tourism, social media, a public works director is not a good issue. We know we got to have that. But based on, you know, the challenges that we're about to meet, you know, we might have to look at restructuring several of those positions. In other words, they may not be open. We might pick one, and then what we have them do for a living might be a little more multifaceted than what we want. There might be some opportunities in-house where, you know, some people aren't doing a full 40 hours a week if the city doesn't have a lot going on. So I think we got to take a step back on those, even though the public works position is advertised. And do we have any applications yet?
Just a handful. I think it's under 10 at that right now.
Okay, anybody, do you have?
Well, I have a lead on somebody who may be applying. It turns out it was one of the... I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you briefly touch on number 24?
All right, number 24, you know, the city basically stopped having and having a one center of its own. Okay? Whether you necessarily agree with that or not is up for debate. Whether the city has the ability to reinstate the communications department is up for debate. And then with that also goes a Lake City contract, which obviously we lost. But part of that Lake City contract had a dollar value, number two. Lake City still does not have the promised fire station that was offered to them. So it's one of those where anything's in play until that fire station gets built. If that fire station gets built, then I don't think so, you know? So it really just comes down to a couple of things. So first one basically being is right now, when you call number one, you don't call Marrow anymore. You call somebody else, right? The average person may or may not know that. One of the ways that we dealt with at least a portion of that was your non-emergency response from the police department. In other words, and it's in your, of course, you guys already know this, but the bottom line is, you now can call the police department, non-emergency number 4006 up till 10 o'clock at night, which means if you have an issue, you can do that. We also have the ability on the individual radios within the police department to basically respond to each other like a walkie talkie, so they're not on hold waiting for the calls to clearly play in the number of other cities. So that's, that's one of the issues is on emergency, that's one thing.
May I just ask a question? What would we have to do in order to go back to 911 operations in the city?
First, we need to find about a billion dollars. So if your budget's in pretty good shape, then that might be something as a stretch bill to kind of look at, is that something we can do? Current economics probably just kicked that thing pretty hard. So you have to kind of say, you know, the non-emergency number for police department, I think that was a pretty cost-effective solution to get, you know, so your citizen could actually call. I think that works first, to be able to help the officers so they could reroute their calls to themselves internally. I think that helps. But as far as like resetting up the 911 center, I think that has to take a back burner based on budget. I just, you know, I think that's a little complicated. And remember, you started overview. You got to put the people in the chairs. You got to train them. You got to do the other things. So you lost a little bit when you lost it, but then the question is, can you figure out how to refinance it? You know, so if I could talk to, you know, Lake City and convince them to, you know, redo a contract, that would be nice. That helps pay for, you know, a decent amount of. But it might, it might not. You know, it might sit at economics. It doesn't do us any good to negotiate something you don't want. That's important too.
And just remember that our ISO rating of one was reliant on the move to the county, if that matters to you.
Well, it matters to the fire chief, but I would tell you that if you look at what it matters to you as an individual who has a certain amount of your insurance costs is related to your ISO rating, but once you get past a three, that the numbers don't matter anymore. What they look at is your death ratio and different things like that, so your actual fire ratio. Once you got a fire plugged there or a certain response time, you meet the requirements. Anything after a three is just polishing the shield a little better. So I'm not saying it's a bad option. I'm just saying if you had to personally pay for it, you'd probably pass because there's no value to you over a certain number. But I know that they like it. I don't have to dispute that. I'm just saying is, you know, when you call number one, you don't call Marrow. There's nobody there that knows your name, and, you know, that doesn't sit well with me long term. But the time may have passed and it might not be worth it. But until they build that fire station in Lake City, I think you still have one foot potentially on the boat. But you got to have enough boats to be able to go get it, and you have to have enough money to be a operator. And right now, money just simply became a problem. So, but the idea is now, you know, if the economy takes care of itself, you know, it might be where you got to negotiate, you know, it might take a second to negotiate, you know? They might not have an interest in it. So that's why I thought the idea is to say, you know, we had one, what would it take to do it? Good question. But if the operating cost was about 425,000, I could get a contract with Lake City for about 375, which is what it was when we turned it down. Those numbers are pretty reasonable. If we had to pay the whole 400 out of your pocket plus some 800 in capital cost, I'd say that's a stretch bill that, you know, it's going to take us a while to get. We have a number of other things that are higher priority, you know, in the city to be able to deliver. And I would probably, yeah, so far as to say, a senior center or a rec center might take precedent of that. I don't know.
Now you're talking.
All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about the number 4D.
Number what? I'm sorry?
4D.
4D. Please text.
We did. She had, Angela had some brief discussions as to where we were with that. We have some collection, but I don't have a sheet for you, and she did not have a sheet either. So that's something we'll bring back up at the next workshop.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And then we'll call it a night.
No question. No further question.
Ms. Dean?
No one, no one asked further questions.
I assume that's this night as well?
Right.
All right, Ms. Qua? All right. Appreciate you greatly. We'll have a better sound system at the next meeting.